Caricom Roundabout. As the various Caricom heads take their position amongst our local members of the Cabinet, members of government, and also other specially invited guests. So you are actually viewing the official, the build-up, I should say, to the unveiling of the Caricom Roundabout here in Grenada. Beautiful afternoon, bright and sunny, and we are just awaiting this historic moment for us. And as I mentioned before, this is a milestone. It represents decades of collaboration and shared goals and regional growth in recognition of Grenada's pivotal role in regional integration and its ongoing contributions to the Caribbean community. And it's on this backdrop that the Government of Grenada, through the National Organising Committee, has decided to rename the True Blue Roundabout to the Caricom Roundabout. So it is important that we know that. And also, historically happening here as well is Kuroso becoming a member. So as I mentioned before, their flag would not be hoisted and unveiled at this particular time, but once they would have signed the documentation during the opening ceremony of the 47th Regular Meeting of Caricom Heads, that would happen. So that we would bring to you a little later on. But all for now, the heads are arriving for this very important function here at the True Blue Roundabout. And the Honourable Prime Minister again is on the screen, and he is greeting his guest. I think there will be lots of handshakes this afternoon. And this aspect is an initiative of the National Organising Committee, and it is twinned with the 47th Regular Meeting of the Caribbean Heads, Caricom Heads. And it is really an opportune moment for them to be a part of this. As we know, Grenada is known for doing things and doing things well. So opening of the Caricom Roundabout with them present in Grenada is really historic and important for all parties involved. So what you've seen on the screen is specially invited guests and all those who are greeting and having brief conversations with the Prime Minister, Honourable Deacon Mitchell. That is what is happening at this particular moment. And I just want to let you know that when it comes to, just to give you a rundown as to what is going to be happening, once we move over to the official ceremony part, that would be done by Miss Zoe Hagley. She would take us through that aspect. We would have an opening prayer by Bishop Clyde Harvey, and he would also do the blessing of the Roundabout. Then we would have the welcome remarks, and that would be done by Mrs Gail Purcell. She's the head of the NOC Secretariat. And we would also have remarks by Dr Carla Barnett, Caricom Secretary General, and of course, remarks from the Honourable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada. And right after that, we would see the unveiling proceedings taking place. So this is what you can look forward to during this very important unveiling ceremony of the Caricom Roundabout here in St George, Grenada. And at this moment, we are going to go over to Zoe Hagley. She is the emcee, and she would take us through this aspect of the evening proceeding. Zoe?
Welcome to the unveiling of the Caricom Roundabout here in warm but beautiful Grenada. I'm Zoe Hagley, and it's my pleasure to be your Madam of Ceremonies for this short but significant event. At this point, I'm sure we're all aware that this unveiling, as well as the 47th Heads of Government meeting, were both originally scheduled for around the time of the passage of Hurricane Barrell. Now, here we are, four weeks later, and while many of the region's citizens are rebuilding, they are showing their strength and resilience. Now, not disregarding Barrell's destruction, but I think one silver lining that we can draw from the passage is that it highlighted our tenacity and camaraderie as Caribbean people. The rapid relief efforts from around the region, I think, were a testament and a moment for us to admire, that while we have our differences, we truly are brothers and sisters who are simply separated by water. I think we are very fortunate to be from an amazing region with incredible people, with whom we share a rich history and region. To put it nicely, we're real nice. This Caricom Roundabout is an ode to our similarities and unity that we share across the region. And we will hear more about the significance of the monument quite shortly. But first, to officially open today's proceedings, I would like to invite Bishop Clyde Harvey to bless us, to bless the proceedings, and to bless the soon-to-be Caricom Roundabout. Bishop Harvey?
Prime Minister Mitchell, Your Excellency's Heads of Government from across the region, and if I may be so bold as to greet Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. You see, I'm so much a part of Grenada that I almost forgot your name. Before I invite you to pray, I want to put a context to this. Because when I was thinking about this over the past week in Dominica, the idea of the Roundabout was very much in my mind. You are beginning a meeting, and meetings of any importance usually have some symbolic element to them. And when you talk religion, you're talking symbolism. And the question I put before you is, how can a Roundabout be a symbol of our Caribbean people and of this meeting? What struck me, first of all, is that a Roundabout is a circle. And the circle is, in the spiritual realm, a sign of perfection. It has no beginning, it has no end, it relates to the divine. And what we have to remember all the time as people is that we are never just human. We are always humans with a certain aspiration to be one with the divine. But one of the interesting things about Roundabouts, and last night when I was passing here, I felt it. You can be in a Roundabout, round and round we go, round we go, the mulberry bush as they sing. And if you keep going right, you just keep going round the Roundabout. You can never come out. You have to take a turn to the left if you want to come out, at least in English, former English colonies, you know. And therefore, as we pray for the success of the meeting, as well as the blessing of the Roundabout, I want to pray that, especially under the leadership of Prime Minister Mitchell, that we might never get caught up only in the right. That sometimes we have to risk what is not right. So that we go a little bit left, and in going left, find a destination, whether it's the destination we planned for, or whether it is a destination that is totally new and surprising. Caribbean people have often said of Caricom that they're going everywhere and nowhere at the same time. That's a challenge to you all at this meeting. So every time you pass this Roundabout over the next 48 hours, ask yourself, how can I help this meeting and my people to find the direction that will lead to a destination of which we can all be proud? So let us pray. Come, my people, and praise the Lord. Praise the Lord, who is our God. For the Lord is a mighty God. He is King and Lord Supreme. In God's hands are our islands green. And the waters ever clean. And so gracious God, we erect this Roundabout, this monument, to the unity of our people and to the determination of our cause. We bless this monument in the shadow of a hurricane. But we know that hurricanes are part of our reality and our destiny, and that only if we come together as a people can we truly, truly build a society in which we have no fairer hurricanes, in which we do not depend on others when hurricanes come our way, but where we can truly so think about and work with this reality in which we live, that we will always be able to stand tall and strong, no matter what winds may blow our way. And so, Lord, as we honour our unity, as we honour the gift that we are for each other, as we allow our flags and our symbols to be here in this place, to keep us on one Roundabout, yes, but never afraid to take directions that will lead us to destinations we dare not dream of. And so, Lord, we ask you that every time a citizen of Grenada, any time a Caribbean citizen visiting passes this place, that they may be reminded that we are not simply insular people, but that we are a community of peoples with a common history, and we dare to believe with a common destiny. So whatever we face in the future, let us face it as one united people. Let us face it reaching out to help one another in whatever ways we can. Let us so work together that the flags that fly from this place, the symbols in this place that remind us of our unity and the joy of the rhythms that we feel, we may so live our lives together that this Roundabout will stand ever to bear witness to those truths. Lord, we thank you for the presence of young people here, because we dare to hope and to challenge ourselves that this Roundabout will be so well-maintained by whatever regime may lead this country, that it will always be for our young people, a challenge to dream this Caribbean dream, to rally around the West Indies especially, to rise above the challenges that we face, not only on the cricket field, but in every sphere of our lives. And may generations to come be able to repeat the victories, to give new shape to the destiny, and to help us always to hold our heads high as free people, as intelligent people, as people who love one another beyond our wildest dreams. And so, Lord, bless this Roundabout as we bless it in your name, and let it flourish in our future as a sign for all. And may all who are here this afternoon, from President, Prime Minister, to policeman or just protocol officer, always remember that they were here today and keep the memories alive for generations to come. We ask this through Jesus Christ, oh Lord. And allow sprinkle some blessed water in the centre, where most of the plants are, and we pray that they grow tall and strong to overcome any hurricanes that may pass by. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Harvey. The idea for this Roundabout, well, the renaming rather, emerged out of discussions on Grenada's Golden Jubilee celebrations. It was believed that the renaming of this particular Roundabout would be a good way to recognise Grenada's contributions to Caribbean integration over the years. So to give us a little bit more insight into how this Roundabout marks Grenada's Golden Jubilee celebrations, I'd like to invite Mrs Gail Purcell, Director of the 50th Independence Secretariat, to give remarks on behalf of Dr Wendy Crawford. Please let's welcome Mrs Purcell.
Honourable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada and Chairman of Caricom, visiting Heads of Government, Secretary General of Caricom, Dr Carla Barnett, Heads of Delegations, Members of Grenada's Parliament, specially invited guests, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Chairperson of the National Organising Committee for the 50th Anniversary of Independence, Dr Wendy Crawford, it is my distinct pleasure to welcome you to our beautiful and magical island of Grenada. It is indeed an honour that Grenada is hosting the 47th Caricom Heads of Government Conference to coincide with our Golden Jubilee year. We are celebrating 50 years as an independent nation, and our celebrations overlapped with the celebration of 50 years as a member of Caricom. For us, 2024 is a golden, double, double golden Jubilee year. In recognition and in honour of the Member and Associate Member States of Caricom, and to all the people who call this region home, we dedicate this installation in your name and honour the Caricom Roundabout. This location has historical significance for us here in Grenada and also for the Caribbean collaboration. Right at this very spot, if you look over there, marks the entrance to the venue of Grenada's first Caribbean exposition held 55 years ago, under the leadership of our father of independence, Sir Eric Matthew Gary, and dubbed Carifta Expo 69. Therefore, when we contemplated an appropriate location to honour our Caricom brothers and sisters, this was undoubtedly a top choice. We've chosen a circular feature to symbolise our leaders and people working together, guided by mutual respect toward our common destiny. It is a symbol of unity in diversity, a symbol of oneness as a people. It depicts further the continuous, unending, and unbreakable connections of our people. This concept is inspired by the theme of Grenada's Anniversary of Independence: One People, One Journey, One Future. We bid you an insightful and productive meeting as you chart the way forward for our wondrous region. And once again, we welcome you all to our beautiful, pure Grenada, the spice of the Caribbean. I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Purcell. As was mentioned, here in Grenada, we are truly delighted to host the 47th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of Caricom. We're even more thrilled that today's unveiling was included as part of the meeting's overall activities. To share more on how this renaming is significant to Caricom, it's my pleasure to invite Dr Carla Barnett, Secretary General of Caricom, to give some remarks. Please let's welcome Dr Barnett.
Thank you very much, Madam Mistress of Ceremonies. Honourable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada and Chairman of the Conference, Your Excellencies, Heads of State and Government of the Caribbean Community, Honourable Ministers, Heads of Delegation, Media Representative, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. This ceremony, to rename this Roundabout to the Caricom Roundabout, is part of a series of activities, as we've heard, to mark dual 50th Anniversary celebrations, that of the Caribbean community and that of our host nation, Grenada. I congratulate our Chair, Honourable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, for his astute selection of a symbol of convergence, interconnectedness, and purpose to create a symbol of the resilience, unity, and collaboration, which are of particular relevance for the region, following the experiences of Hurricane Barrell a mere few weeks ago. As we unveil the new name, we pay tribute to the founding fathers and past leaders of our community and of Grenada, whose collective wisdom and determination have fuelled our integration journey to this point, our joint 50th anniversaries. This ceremony takes place within the context of the 47th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government, where discussions on the future and direction of the community will take place. I hope that it will help to heighten awareness and deepen appreciation for the work of the community and inspire current and future generations to play an active role in advancing the vision of an integrated, inclusive, and resilient Caribbean community for all. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Dr Barnett. As Mrs Purcell mentioned, 2024 is a significant year for Grenada for several reasons. Not only is it our 50th Anniversary of Independence, but it also marks 35 years since the signing of Caricom's Grand Dance Declaration here in Grenada. And most recently, our very own Prime Minister, Honourable Deacon Mitchell, assumed the role of Chairman of Caricom. So as our final speaker this afternoon, before we move on to the unveiling, I'd like to invite Prime Minister Mitchell to give his remarks, highlighting the significance of this renaming activity. Mr, Prime Minister Mitchell?
The saying is, if you plant a tree, knowing that you will not sit in its shade, or knowing that you will not eat its fruits, you've begun to understand life. The founding fathers of the Caribbean community 51 years ago, and for those who championed the integration movement prior to 51 years ago, clearly understood life. Distinguished colleague Heads of Government, distinguished Heads of Delegations, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I welcome you to Grenada. I particularly want to welcome the Head of Delegation from Haiti and from Kuroso. Dr Barnett, thank you for ensuring that this ceremony happened as part of the 47th Regular Meeting. I want to thank you and the Secretariat for ensuring it happened. And sometimes, despite the challenges we face, we are here again 28 days later, in beautiful Grenada, in warm Grenada. And we chose to have this gathering to demonstrate that no matter how many times we get punched in the face, no matter how many times we in the Caribbean community get knocked down, we will rise again and again. And so I want to express my profound gratitude to my colleague heads for ensuring that this meeting took place. It could have been quite easy to say, given the gravity of the challenges facing all of us, that we postponed this meeting. That it not happened. But that never crossed the mind of any of the colleagues. And once we agreed that we were hosting the meeting, the support was unanimous. And so I express on behalf of the people and the Government of Grenada a profound gratitude for all of you, despite the challenge of the schedule, have been here with us this afternoon. They say it's Marilyn Monroe who says, "I shall not keep you long." And I don't intend to keep you long. This historic moment, and this historic site, ensures that anyone who visits Grenada by air, on entering Grenada and on leaving Grenada, will pass through this Caricom Roundabout. And we have chosen this site because we wish to make it clear that the Caribbean community is integral to Grenada's identity, and that Grenada is an integral part of the Caribbean community. In fact, almost every Roundabout in Grenada is simply named after its geographic location. And so this is perhaps the first Roundabout where a deliberate act of renaming is taking place. And it is not by coincidence, because as Grenada begins to come to terms with its long history, and as it reflects on its 50th Anniversary of Independence, the issue of identity, the issue of who we are, the issue of owning our heritage, owning our landmarks, and ensuring that they are renamed after the persons who have created and contributed to our community is something that is very much an integral part of what we need to do over the next 50 years. And I could think of no better way than by starting to acknowledge the seminal role that the integration movement and the Caribbean community has played in shaping the history of Grenada. I need only speak of 1983, and the regional security system, and the fact that its first deployment was in fact in Grenada, to restore law and order and to restore democracy as we now enjoy it today. Those troubling and dark days challenged the integration movement. And in many instances, it perhaps led to heads then having serious philosophical differences as to what should or should not have happened in Grenada in October of 1983. We need only look to Hurricane Ivan and the devastation and the breakdown of law and order. And it was our brothers and sisters from Caricom, and in particular Trinidad and Tobago, who came to our rescue. We need only look to this month and the devastation wrought by Hurricane Barrell, the Caricom, Pitti Martini, the Grenadian Islands, to the north of Grenada. And once again, it is our brothers and sisters in Caricom who've come to our rescue. So this is a fitting tribute to our brothers and sisters in Caricom. Welcome, and I thank you. We could do no more than to simply say to you, our solidarity and our commitment to Caricom is deepened, strengthened, and will remain unwavering. Thank you very much, and welcome to Grenada. We shall rise.
Thank you so much, Prime Minister Mitchell. Now, it's the moment we've all been waiting for. It's the unveiling of the Caricom Roundabout. So a few points of information before we begin. Curacao will officially become an associate member of CARICOM during this 47th meeting. Therefore... Therefore, Curacao's pillar will remain covered until their accession. So if you see something covered after everything is uncovered, it's for that reason. Also, we will be taking a group photo at the monument. That's all the heads of governments, all the representatives. So please don't run away right after. I know it's warm, but we want to get one photo in. At this moment, I would like to invite all heads of government. So please proceed to the monument and stand next to your nation's pillar. You will be escorted to the monument. While that's happening, Dr Barnett, I would also like to invite you to the monument to partake in the unveiling of the official plaque. While everyone is getting settled, I would now like to invite you, our specially invited guests, if you would like to make your way around so you can witness this historic moment.
Okay, so we have reached the part of the ceremony where we will see the unveiling of the monuments. We're seeing to the front there the Honorable Prime Minister from Grenada. It is indeed a historic moment for us here, and I just want to reflect just a bit on what was said by Bishop Harvey. He said, "Only if we can come together as a people and a community that we will be able to stand tall and strong." So I think this is a significant... This was a significant point made, and coming together as one, they always say that we are stronger together. So there are heads that are here for the relevant countries will unveil a monument. And it is important to note that those that are not here at the moment, they have some cadets standing by who will do the honors of unveiling the monument. And as Zoe said, Curacao's own will not be unveiled at this moment. And as I told you in the beginning, it will be done after they would have signed official documents during the 47th Regular Meeting that is going to officially open not too long from now at the Charter Hall, St. George's University.
How this is going to go. So to the heads of government and to the representatives, once I call your nation's name, then you can remove the covering. We will move quite quickly. Once the pillar for each nation has been revealed, we're kindly asking Prime Minister Mitchell and Dr Barnett to unveil the official plaque, which will declare this the CARICOM Roundabout. And to our amazing audience, if we can save all the applause for the end when we have the final unveiling, that would be really appreciated. If I can get a cue for when we're ready to go. Okay, the moment we've been waiting for, the official unveiling. Grenada. Antigua and Barbuda. Bahamas. Barbados. Belize. Dominica. Guyana. Haiti. Jamaica. Montserrat. Saint Kitts and Nevis. Saint Lucia. Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. Suriname. Trinidad and Tobago. Angola. Bermuda. British Virgin Islands. Cayman Islands. Turks and Caicos Islands. We'll now have the official unveiling of the plaque. Ladies and gentlemen, the CARICOM Roundabout. I think we can give one more round of applause. I'll now ask all heads of government to please gather around the monument for a photo. You'll be directed by the photographers. Everyone else, this concludes today's activities. Thank you so much for joining us. I know it was warm, but this was important. Thank you so much for being here for this historic moment. Have a great afternoon.
Well, this brings us to the end of this very important... This brings us to the end of this very important... Well, we've just concluded what I would like to say is a historic moment for us here, the unveiling of the CARICOM Roundabout. It was indeed, you know, a very good, warm, entertaining and enlightening evening, the fact that we were able to twin the unveiling of the CARICOM Roundabout with the 47th Regular Meeting of the Heads of Government. And as you're seeing on the screen, they're all gathered there now to take a picture. We say hats off to the National Organizing Committee, brilliant initiative. And we did hear a bit about the history behind the choosing of the True Blue Roundabout, which is now known as the CARICOM Roundabout. The heads are taking the photo and right after that, they will proceed over to the Charter Hall at the St. George's University for the official opening ceremony of the 47th Regular Meeting of the CARICOM Heads. And we do know the Honorable Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell, he is the Chair, and we are expecting a lot of the issues and concerns to be brought to the table. We know that he always speaks highly of the issue of transportation and, you know, exporting of our produce across the region. So this is an opportunity for Grenada to be in the limelight. So we do thank you all so much for being a part of this very important event, the unveiling of the CARICOM Roundabout right here in St. George, Grenada. At this time, so we're still seeing the meet and greet and so taken place at the moment. It is really a spectacle. I know it would be one of the areas where a number of Grenadians will come to to take their regular photos and stuff. It is really, really a beautiful sight here. I hope everyone really appreciates the fact that as part of Golden Jubilee, we have this significant activity here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for attending. We are encouraging everyone now to make their way to the St. George's University Auditorium for the opening ceremony. Will allow the official delegation to make their way out of the car.
Okay, so as we just heard there, it's really signaled the end of this event. The official ceremony is started to begin at 4:00 PM at the Charter Hall, the St. George's University. So we would just keep you, you know, in the loop, showing you the beauty of the Roundabout. And as I said to you, it is one where a number of Grenadians will come through to take the relevant pictures. We're seeing Guyana taking their photo there as well. Once this aspect of our broadcast is over, we will be joining our colleagues over there at the Charter Hall for the official opening ceremony. But in the meantime, we're just showing you, I think, just a nice drone shot of what the monument look like, looks like. We do have our cadets there taking a photo up. And it has really been short but important. On the screen, we can get a browse of some of the specially invited guests. We're seeing the cab sec there. And everybody's just organizing themselves to make way to St. George's University for the official opening ceremony of the 47th Heads of CARICOM Meeting. And as I mentioned before, a number of important factors will be discussed there and, you know, in moving the Caribbean, the CARICOM region forward. A number of heads are here. We do know the conditions that they are here under. Some of them recently had to battle, like Grenada, with the catastrophic devastation caused by Hurricane Beryl. But nonetheless, they saw the significance and the importance. And we have this 47th Regular Meeting taking place in Grenada at this moment. It will conclude on Tuesday, but in the meantime, we're here showing you this very historic moment, the unveiling of what is now known as the CARICOM Roundabout. So once you enter Grenada by air, you will pass the Roundabout. And once you leave Grenada by air, you will also pass the Roundabout. It is indeed a spectacle, and I know a number of people will look forward to having the pictures taken there. But as I said, this was just the first aspect of what is going to be happening as we talk the 47th anniversary, the 47th Regular Meeting of the CARICOM Heads. So on behalf of the entire crew on this end, we now want to turn over to Mr Richard Simon, sorry, who is at the Charter Hall, and he will take us through what's happening on that end as we await the official opening ceremony of the 47th Regular Meeting of the CARICOM Heads. So over to you, Richard.
It's a celebration of a Caribbean identity here at the St. George's University, the opening ceremony for the 47th CARICOM Heads of Government Meeting in Grenada. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Richard Simon, and I'm your host. I'll be joined later on this evening by Ms Sherri Annoel. But it's my opportunity to welcome you, a privilege to welcome you wherever you are in Grenada or in any member state of the Caribbean community. It's a wonderful day in Grenada. We've been having some rains over the last couple of days, but right now it's very sunny here in southern Grenada. The picturesque SGU, St. George's University, we're about a stone's throw away. And you may have heard not long ago, one of the planes passing by. We're just a stone's throw away from the Maurice Bishop International Airport here at the picturesque southern tip of Grenada. So it's my privilege again to welcome you all wherever you are to today's broadcast. We just saw the unveiling of the CARICOM Roundabout, and that's just about a mile and a half away from here. And we look forward, of course, to the start of the opening, the official opening ceremony here at the SGU. I can tell you that we've seen a number of government officials, private sector officials, regional and local coming to the opening ceremony, a number of government officials. We saw in fact, more of the persons who will be honoured today at this ceremony, Clive Lloyd from Guyana, of course, a former Western East captain, and we welcome him. Roderick Rainford, the former head of CARICOM, is also on the program to be honoured as well today. And we look forward, we did not see him come through, he may have passed another entrance, but we certainly welcome them as well to this occasion. It's picturesque, but it is also historic. We are in a location in Grenada that formed the basis back in 1969 for the Grenada Exposition under Sir Eric Matthew Gary at the time. SGU is in that location, it's on that exact point where back in 1969, Grenada heralded the exposition of 1969. It is all today known as Expo 69. It's a historic moment as well because we are witnessing the handover of the chairmanship of CARICOM from Guyana's president to the Prime Minister of Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell. And this will be the first time he's accepting the chairmanship of CARICOM in the six-month rotational basis that the chairmanship rotates. And therefore, we look forward to that moment as well. And of course, it's also a historic occasion and a historic area because southern Grenada has been kind of the hub for Windward Islands, first of all, and then OCS and of course, CARICOM. Remember 35 years ago, the signing of the CARICOM Declaration here in Grenada as well? And we look forward to having more of the business of CARICOM transacted right here in Grandance. It's interesting because exactly 35 years ago where the agreement was signed in Grenada is where the conference business sessions will be held on the Grandance Beach. And that will be about two and a half miles away from here. So the heads will leave here after the opening ceremony, and the business sessions will be held at the Grenada Radisson Resort on the Grandance Beach. We look forward to the outcome of those discussions, for we understand that whenever heads meet, there's history. And we look forward, of course, to the benefits that will come to the Caribbean community as a result of this 47th meeting in Grenada. The signing of the Declaration of St. George's towards the reduction of intra-CARICOM roaming charges, that paved the way for this historic achievement, which was facilitated by the networks, of course, Digital Group and Cable and Wireless Communications. That declaration was signed in 2022, enabled the delivery of seamless roaming and mobile services such as voice, SMS and data to the rest of the region. The meeting is particularly important because it comes as Grenada rebuilds, both on mainland Grenada, northern Grenada, and of course, the islands or sister islands of CARICOM and Pitti Martini off to the north. The rebuilding process is on, and we look forward to, actually, we thank and wish to express our gratitude on behalf of the government of Grenada to all the countries of the Caribbean and all the countries of the Caribbean community CARICOM who've reached out and lent a hand in this difficult situation. Just a few minutes ago, in fact, we saw the arrival here at the SGU of what is called the CARICOM String Band, one of the string bands from CARICOM that's visiting, and they'll be performing later at the opening ceremony as well. After my right, the Grenada Cadet Corps is lined up with a number of the flags from the respective nations, and we are waiting the arrival of the heads now that they've concluded the opening, the official launch of the CARICOM Roundabout. And just up the road from here, we're expecting them to arrive here any moment and to begin the procession into the main hall for the opening ceremony. Well, the importance of regional bodies such as ours, such as CARICOM cannot be overstated. It is, it is bodies like these, on occasions like these, come to life in the context of whether there's any issues in developing any particular states that we can support and help each other. It's clear that one of the major issues talking about hurricanes that will be on the agenda will be the issue of climate change. Our Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell, who will be the incoming Chair of CARICOM, said recently that it is, it is time that the international community looks at the issue of climate change and its effects on small island developing states. And he called for climate justice. And he called for climate justice, an important term in the region, because of course, we are facing more and more and more intense storm systems that are coming through this year, of course, being a particularly active hurricane season. So we look forward to the discussions coming out of this particular meeting as well. We also, this particular meeting will also be focusing on the issues related to food security and the region. That discussion has started some time ago, and it will be furthered and reviewed and examined at this, at this particular meeting. We also recognize that the agricultural sector is playing a very important role in all Caribbean countries, and that's also under review at this particular meeting. And we look forward to the outcomes of that as well. Talking about climate change, we get back to 2008, 2009, when Grenada chaired the Alliance of Small Island States, and since then has been advocating on behalf of the region and playing its role, in fact, in the discussions that seeks to ensure that the regional issues, the regional concerns related to climate change, the regional impacts related to climate change are addressed at not just regional level, but at the international level as well. So that conversation is a continuing conversation, and the heads will have it on the agenda as well in today's, in this weekend's exercise. The heads are meeting here for, starting today, three days. The conference, the Heads of Government Conference ends on Tuesday afternoon at about 4:30 with a final communique and a final press conference. But in the meantime, the issues of science and technology will be at the forefront as well. Grenada, the leadership of our country is very much involved, and in the forefront of that, as Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell, who is the person responsible for science and technology at the Caricom level. And so we are, we are eager to see what are the things that will be on the agenda to ensure that we have some outcomes that will benefit that sector across the region. The Grand Anse Declaration, if we look back, looked at issues such as environmental protection, education, culture, health, and regional security. And of course, if you viewed the Caricom website, there's a host of information there that we can also look into in case, I'm just actually touching the very bare bones of the conversations, but it's important that we as Caribbean people keep ourselves abreast and keep ourselves aware of the changes within Caricom. It's a celebration of an identity, a Caribbean identity that we all must be focusing on. We also congratulate the heads for this meeting and look forward to what they will be agreeing to at the end of this particular meeting. The meeting's agenda comprised agri-food systems, that's on the agenda, prioritizing food and nutrition security, climate change and sustainable development, of course, foreign policy, the Caricom single market and economy, that's very important, and the engagement with social partners. Of course, Hurricane Barrel will also be on the, on the agenda as we look to see, as we, in Grenada, were the ones affected by Hurricane Barrel. In fact, Karakou and Peti Martinique, our work is ongoing there and in northern Grenada as well to get, to rebuild after the destruction of the Hurricane Barrel. So I have, I have with me the, one of the young men who's in the leadership of the Grenada Trade Union Movement. He is Mr. Grimes, Brian Grimes, and we are here talking, we're going to be talking today about the impact of labor and labor relations within Caricom. First of all, welcome. It's wonderful to see you. Tell me about the importance of meetings like these and their overall view of the labor situation in not just in Grenada, but certainly the Caricom region.
Yes, integration is very important, and labor is no different. I'm really, really happy to be part of this, this event, this session. I'm very proud as a Grenadian, not just a labor leader, but I'm very proud. Recently, I went to the Caribbean Public Service Association, which is something similar to Caricom, but on a more micro level as regards public sector unions within the region. It was held in Bermuda, and, you know, similar to Caricom, in fact, different islands in alphabetical order would get a chance to chair and host different events when the year comes. So as far as that is concerned, we are moving forward. We are moving forward as far as labor is concerned. The CPSA is what it's called. It's very similar. It's over fifty years old, similar to Caricom. So I'm happy to be here, following that event, to see this particular, you know, event, the renaming of the roundabout and so forth, and the fact that our fairly new Prime Minister is the Chair of Caricom. It's something incredible, and I'm very, very happy to be part of it and witnessing it as a Grenadian.
Let me ask you, in the context of a changing Caribbean, clearly, the things we knew ten and fifteen years ago are no longer, almost no longer relevant. How is the public sector factoring in these changes? And how is the, our sector adapting to these new changes, this new global environment?
Yeah, well, you know, nothing can happen in any nation without proper public service. Public service is absolutely critical. So as we go along, we hear things, different things about public sector, you know, reformation and so forth, and improvement. And the trade union movement is happy to be part of that in a collaborative way. Many people view the trade union movement in general as sometimes adversarial, but in fact, what we try to do is walk along with administrations, walk along with governments to ensure the development of society and by extension, the country. So, yeah.
We're seeing a number of new issues, food security as a major issue in this, in this environment. Issues of climate change is not necessarily new, but we're seeing the impacts of that. Again, the public service is in a position to facilitate a number of those issues. What's the discussion like at the level of the, the public service, both locally and regionally, as it relates to addressing issues of climate change, for example?
Yeah, so food security is important, but I'd want to hone in on climate change. And recently, what happened with Barrel, it just put a magnifying glass or a microscope on the importance of this discussion. I'm very proud and happy to see that our Prime Minister and the Chair of Caricom, Honorable Deacon Mitchell, has decided, you know, we have to take this, we have to take this further. We have to speak at different functions, United Nations level, COP, wherever we can to ensure that this must be addressed, because we are bearing a small island developing state, the brunt of the activities that are causing these adverse climate events. So we have to do something about it. That might be more long-term. In the short term, I'm happy to know that we are looking towards things such as how we rebuild, how we rebuild. So currently, Karakou and Peti Martinique is flattened, but how do we rebuild? We have to make sure that the infrastructure is hurricane resistant and resilient as best as possible. We have to get into ensuring that insurance, house insurance, and this building insurance becomes part of the norm and cultureized in our society, so that when we have adverse events like Barrel, we can rebuild in a faster way. So climate change is something we definitely have to look at. We are small, but we have a voice at the, at the international level, and I look forward to seeing a lot of advocacy in ensuring that we rebuild better, as well as advocate to the, you know, the bigger nations, the global north, in trying to be as responsible as possible in terms of their industrial development.
Thank you very much for stopping by. It's wonderful to see you. So that was Mr. Brian Grimes. He is the President of the Grenada Public Workers Union. Sheri Ann has just joined me. She was over at the historic launch of the Caricom Roundabout. She will join me on camera shortly, but I have, I'm privileged to invite into the space the Honorable Colonel Joseph, who is the Grenada's Attorney General, the Minister of Legal Affairs. Wonderful to have you, wonderful to see you this afternoon. Tell me about Grenada's acceptance of the chairmanship of Caricom. What's going to be our major focus? I know we are leading the charge on science and technology, but tell me about where that sits and how we can benefit and push that conversation forward.
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, I'm Richard, digital transformation is one of the pillars of growth that we as a government has recognized. And in assuming the chairmanship, as you said, Prime Minister Mitchell would also be responsible for information, communication, technology, and technology in general in the, in the cabinet of Caricom, so to speak, because as you know, there's a structure in cabinet in Caricom where there is a cabinet-like structure with each head responsible for a different area of growth and transformation. And so the assumption of the chairmanship and the focus on science, technology, digital transformation squares well with our own focus in Grenada. And Prime Minister Mitchell has already indicated that his aim is to push this forward much more than it had been done in the past. So look forward to a lot of initiatives as we move the whole of the Caricom region to a new era of digital transformation, where, as in Grenada, we aim for all governments to move towards a paperless system, a paperless government. So that would definitely be a focus, climate change and sustainable development, pressing the larger countries to be responsible and to do more than to just giving lip service to solving the problems associated with climate change, because we in the Caribbean, we feel the impact more than perhaps any other region of the world, being small island developing states and very vulnerable. So that the Prime Minister would be focusing as Chairman of Caricom.
So I want to ask you, with this climate change, this whole issue of climate justice that the Prime Minister mentioned, what is your view of that? What does it look like? What does climate justice look like as far as Grenada is concerned with his attempting to push that agenda in the wider community?
As you know, global warming is real, and global warming is the main cause of the ferocious hurricanes that we have been having. In the past, we knew nothing of category four and five hurricanes. Now we are, we are possibly facing hurricanes, the strength of which will surpass category five. And that is because the larger nations who contribute to the causes of global warming continue to pay lip service rather than to meet the commitments that they have, that they have signed on to. And when we have ferocious storms such as Barrel, what we find ourselves doing is being set back many years. Every time we develop and we grow, we have a setback. And in rebuilding, we would find that a lot of the funding available comprise loan funding rather than grants. So we find ourselves having to cause our economies and our countries to become indebted in order to recover from the impact of these ferocious storms. And we are saying that, one, the countries must meet their commitments to reduce harmful greenhouse emissions, because that's part of what they agreed to in their Paris Agreement, for example. Secondly, they must do more to assist via grant funding, not loan, to help countries such as ours to recover after these dangerous storms and to build back better. And in building back better, ensuring that we do not have to be borrowing in order to do that. Otherwise, we will never grow as, as we would like to.
Senator Joseph, thank you very much. Time to spend time with you very successful launch and this afternoon, opening ceremony, and we look forward to speaking to you afterward as well.
Thank you. We've had a wonderful launch and unveiling of the Caricom Roundabout, and so I expect the rest of the meeting to be just as wonderful and successful.
Thank you. Nice to see you. All right. Well, I'm going to be joined by Aaron Moses shortly, but if you look in the background, you're going to see a number of the Karakou team I was talking about earlier. They're just up there as the Karakou String Band. They have made it down to Grenada, and we definitely are happy to have them. Of course, they come from an island that's been devastated by Hurricane Barrel. But yet they took the time to come down and share with us here at the launch of the opening ceremony at the forty-seventh Caricom Summit here in Grenada. I'm joined by Aaron Moses, a good colleague of mine. Wonderful to see you, sir. You have, you tell me about the importance of Caricom. We've attended several Caricom issues, and we want to, I want you to tell me where we are. Has things really changed for the Caribbean? We've had discussions, we've been having agreements signed. You've been in the economic space for a while. Tell me your own interpretations of where we are as a region.
Well, I think Caricom has had tremendous achievements over the last fifty-one years. Certainly, there were challenges, there were weaknesses, but I think when we look at the fundamental pillars on which Caricom are built, that is the pursuance of the deep integration of the region's economies, there have been significant progress. Some may argue that the progress has not been accelerated enough, but we have achieved quite a lot. And I think with a new dispensational leadership we have now, they have been moving aggressively and demonstrating tremendous commitment and dedication towards deepening the integration movement. And hence the reason that so much emphasis is now being placed on ensuring that all the administrative and legislative arrangements that are enabling to ensure that we do have a single market and economy are being put in place. When we look at the areas of functional cooperation, that would be one of our extremely successful area.
Ladies and gentlemen, we now welcome our heads of government. At first, the Secretary-General of Caracum, Her Excellency Dr. Carla Barnett. Representing Antigua and Barbuda, the Honorable Chet Green. From the Commonwealth of Bahamas, the Honorable Glennis Hannah Martin. Representing Barbados, the Honorable Carrie Simmons. From the Commonwealth of Dominica, the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt. From the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, His Excellency Dr. Mohamed Urfan Ali. From the Republic of Haiti, His Excellency Edgar Leblot Fies. Representing Jamaica, Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith. From Montserrat, the Honorable Charles Purna. From St. Lucia, the Honorable Philip J. Pear. Representing the Federation of St. Kitts and Nevis, the Honorable Jeffrey Haney. From St. Vincent and the Grenadines, Dr. the Honorable Ralph Gonzalez. From the Republic of Suriname, His Excellency Chandrika Prasad Santu. From Trinidad and Tobago, the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago, Dr. the Honorable Keith Rowley. From Bermuda, Bermuda, the Honorable Walter Robach. British Virgin Islands, Dr. the Honorable Natalio Withley. From Turks and Caicos Islands, the Honorable Arlington Musgrave. And ladies and gentlemen, from Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell. Please remain standing as we welcome Governor-General of Grenada, Her Excellency Dame Cecile LaGrenat. And now the National Anthem of Grenada. Thank you, Royal Grenada Police Force Band. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. We'll now invite Pastor Stanford Simon of the St. George's Baptist Church for the invocation.
Let's pray. O God, and eternal Father, O great is your faithfulness and your love. We thank you for this wonderful opportunity as the heads of government meet here for the 47th meeting. We thank you, O God, for the safety bringing every single person here. We thank you for the wisdom, knowledge you have given, O God, to our leaders. As a God here today, Lord, to plan, to seek, Lord, your guidance and wisdom. We thank you, O God, for our fathers, those who have gone before us, provided leadership and guidance, Lord, throughout Caracum. We thank you, O God, for the opportunity. As we look ahead, Lord, we think about the food security, we think about job security, energy security. We pray, O God, as they meet, to discuss, to deliberate, O God, on the issues that confront us as a region. We pray, Heavenly Father, for your wisdom, even as Grenada take up the chairmanship. We ask, O God, that your wisdom be upon our leadership. Lord, may we, as a people, learn to follow. May our leaders think more of the people than themselves. May the reality, God, that we face in the world, we live in a wonderful and a beautiful place for which you have blessed us with. Help our leaders, O God, to dig deep, look into the future. Help us, O God, to prepare for it. And so, God, may your guidance and your leadership be over them. Every word that would be spoken and the thoughts would be shared. This we ask in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Simon. Before I ask the heads to take their seats, I'd like to re-invite our students to present special gifts on behalf of the government and people of Grenada. Audience, you may be seated. On February 7th, 2024, Grenadians at home and abroad. adorned in red, green and gold, united to mark a monumental milestone, the nation's fiftieth anniversary of independence. There was a palatable and visible sense of pride on the faces of thousands of Grenadians who celebrated. The significance of the fiftieth anniversary of independence was deeply engraved in the heart of every Grenadian. It was a time to reflect on past generations' struggles and sacrifices and honor the indomitable spirit of Grenadians. The fiftieth anniversary is a once-in-a-lifetime milestone. We are incredibly proud to collaborate with the Eastern Caribbean Central Bank to unveil the special commemorative circulation of the fifty-dollar banknote, known as the Grenada Fifty. The Grenada fifty-dollar note pays homage to Grenada's vibrant culture, our rich history and cherished icons. The design of this commemorative circulation note weaves together elements that perfectly captures Grenada. Our students will now present the commemorative note to all Heads of Government represented. We want to say thanks to our students for bravely putting their uniforms back on during the summer vacation. Thank you, students. And thank you. You may now have your seats. I now invite the Presentation Brothers College Choir to render the Caracum song.
From many distant lands, our forefathers came. Some seeking adventure, some bound in chains. Through battles, weights and faults, through victory and pain. By test of their courage, our freedom was gained. In homage to those gone before us, their heroes have glanced in the sun. We vow to join hands and to focus on building one Caribbean.
With your voices high, sing of your Caribbean pride.
Sing in loud and strong, your hearts beat as one.
Celebrating song, as we rise to where we belong. Some the things we know, for Caracum.
Though great in diversity, our ethnicities. The bonds that unite us are stronger than peace. We died, we prayed, we loved, we danced and we played. We relate to each other the Western young way.
There as the people unite.
United as one.
Turned and steadfast we stand. We look to a brand new horizon, the future not firmly in our hands.
With your voices high, sing of your Caribbean pride.
Sing with love and strong, your hearts beat as one.
Celebrating song, as we rise to where we belong. Some the things we know, for Caracum.
Elele pa wo, oh we use Caracum.
Elele pa.
Nakio dan Caracum.
Sanwe sanbu pa wo.
Oh we use Caracum.
With your voices high, sing of your Caribbean pride.
Sing in loud and strong, your hearts beat as one.
Celebrating song, as we rise to where we belong. Some the things we know, for Caracum.
Elele pa wo. Oh we use Caracum.
Elele pa.
Ele.
Caracum. Sanwe sanbu pa wo.
Oh we use Caracum.
Ladies and gentlemen, the prestigious Presentation Brothers College Choir. And might I add, alma mater of the Prime Minister of Grenada. We continue to celebrate our young men and they beckon, they're beckoning us to let our hearts beat as one. Your Excellency Dame Cecile La Grenade, Governor-General of Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada and Chairman of Caracum, Your Excellency Dr Mohamed Irfan Ali, President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and outgoing Chairman of Caracum, Heads of Government and Delegations of Caracum Member States and Associate Member States, Your Excellency Dr Carla Barnett, Secretary-General of Caracum, Members of the Cabinet of Grenada and Ministers of Caracum Member States, Presiding Officers of the Parliament of Grenada, Other Members of Parliament, Members of the Diplomatic Corps, Specially Invited Guests, Delegates, Staff of the Caracum Secretariat, Members of the Media. Ladies and gentlemen of the Caribbean community, welcome to Pure Grenada, the spice of the Caribbean. Grenada is home to the exquisite Grand Aunt Beach, the world's first underwater sculpture park, listed as one of the top twenty-five wonders of the world by National Geographic. Welcome again to spicy tropical paradise. My name is Nila Etienne and I am delighted and honored to welcome you to the opening ceremony of the forty-seventh regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. This year is a special year for both Grenada and Caracum, as we both met at fifty. For those of you who missed our celebrations on February 7th, I invite you to reflect with us, celebrating one people, one journey, one future.
We take time to reminisce on the richness of our history from the beginning, from the people who came through sugar and change, emancipation through revolution.
Higher, fifty years we're blessed with force and fire.
Oh, you man. We going up, going up, going up. Going up, going up, going up.
We aspire, build advances one people together.
Grenada, going up, going up, going up. Going up, going up, going up.
Billy and truly can't find the words to describe what my country meant to me. So much things we take for granted, but so much things they give to me. Peace and tranquility, family, community. In the water where we go, in the water just know that you miss where my heart be.
I taste for fifty years, as I shake for fifty more, as I shake to reach a goal, like you're only bring the goal.
Higher, I can see the vision clear, saying it's hard to let the people hear.
Higher, in the sun, look at how we've gone and how far we've come.
Fifty years we're strong and more to come, more to come, more to come. So we are from here.
More, more, more.
Oh, you man.
Higher, higher.
I know you.
So we are.
We're going higher, fifty years we're blessed with force and fire. Still reaching for more. Going up, going up, going up. Going up, going up, going up.
We're in the Caracum, Pity Martnik.
Fifty years we're strong and more to come. Ladies and gentlemen, while we are in the applauding mood, I'd like to invite you to give a round of applause to all our athletes representing us in Paris at this time. And I'd like to invite at this time a cultural presentation, which features Akina Romaine, spoken-word artist, performing a piece called "Yui", Dance Company One Unit, former independence monarch, Mr. Nivian Cox, and our reigning independence monarch, Mr. Finley Jeffrey, also known as the Scholar. And of course, we want to welcome to the stage this evening, this afternoon, groovy artist from Caracu and Pity Martnik, Mr. Golden. Let's welcome them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, before I begin, I just want to ask a question. Do we have any Yui alumni here today? Ooh, that's good. So I just want to get a little bit more specific. Do we have anybody from Mona? All right. Cave Hill? All right. The Best Campus, Saint Augustine? All right. A little bit more specific, anybody stayed on Hall? We have any Melonites inside there? Okay, hello. Lovely. Right. So this piece is entitled "Yui" and it was written while I went to Yui. So for those of you who attended the University of the West Indies... So for those of you who attended the University of the West Indies, you would understand the Caribbean unity and camaraderie I felt at school and what inspired this piece. I wonder if Yui got its name by chance? Why it couldn't be U-O-C? University of the Caribbean? I wonder if serious thought was given to the letters they put in together? To the acronym they making and the name they creating? Because the name they created could never have been more fitting. You see, this Caribbean we live in is all you, we. A name that reflects individuality and in the same breath togetherness. You are all from different islands, but we make up the Caribbean. You, we make me a citizen of the region. I no longer Grenadian. Ivan, See, Lucian, Trini with a little Antigua. And I can't mention every island, but you check what I mean. And you, nah. We have made it so that we highlight our differences, which is fair. We are all unique. But a similar story is told in the different creoles we speak. We are more common than we know or like to admit, but division has more short-term benefits. Check this. What a Grenadian call French cashew, what Trini go call pommade, but that don't change the fact that it red. And when you cut it, the flesh white. So because he Belgian and he Jamaican, that don't change the fact that we fought and still fight in the same fight. Maybe with variations, but our nations are plagued with similar strains like crime, corruption, climate change, and political climates that can change. And when politicians ready to reign, the clouds of corruption, the swell and bust on who? You, we, on us. And when you sit and reflect that, all of we wet dies when you realise we ain't so different. You, we recognise the slice of paradise we have. We're similarly blessed indeed, as chronic say. I'm pleased to be chilling in the West Indies. Chicken curry, curry chicken. And as far as I know, Accra and Fishcake is the same thing. Different things, differences, but different is what makes us beautiful. Our beauty is why we are duty-filled to protect what we hold there. That's why you, we are here. That's another commonality we share. A goal and a vision for a better region. You, we have more in common than dry and wet season or a preference for food that well-seasoned. I believe that you, we have an obligation, a mission that transcends the boundaries of our individual nations. You, we are the salvation for little pieces of heaven. You, we are the catalyst for change. You, we have the brains and the brawn. I'd like to believe our unity isn't entirely gone, that we recognise that victory is only possible when we unite as one, that our ultimate interests are common, that capital has included our vision for a better region. Unity is our best bet. And if you, we, even with a set of degrees, can see that, then you, we fail. Thank you.
They want them all. They say Grenada is a waste of time. They cast their doubt. They say that the country is in decline. Since '74, man is like she don't really go nowhere. In fact, they know that she has been in reverse since that day. But I have her son, a devoted one, with me rock and star, and they run up in half. Just to receive a sicko message, exercise some restraint. I want all our children hold some strain. Hold some strain. Give her some time, she's not yet in her prime. She is only fifteen. Oh, oh. Give her some time, she's not yet in her prime. She just reached half a century. She's still young, no one can debate. She does punch above her weight. So much patriots have her on the map. She winning medal in athletics, in the World Games and the Olympics. I proclaim, put some respect to her name. She faced Ivan, that deadly storm, and has that done. Emelikum, no barrel hit. She won't retreat. Many others wonder make it. So all you sing with me. Give her some time, she's not yet in her prime. She is only fifteen. Oh. Give her some time, she's not yet in her prime. She just reached half a century. All you sing, all you sing this song. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. I'm here now. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. Blow me down. Sing! Oh, oh. Oh, oh. Each and every time she fall down, she always get up and rebound. Oh, oh. Throughout the passage of history, Grenada win many victory. All you sing now? Oh, oh. So welcome to my spice island, the place where resilience was born. Oh, oh. The home of the Emirisho, of Caribbean shop and fado. Oh, oh. So as Prime Minister Deacon, we prefer to lead CARICUM. Oh, oh. The spirit of them heroes today is embedded in his DNA. Oh, oh. And just as my sweet Grenada, he lick the butt so it all a war. Oh, oh. Help me sing, all you help me sing, oh yeah. Give her some time, she's not yet in her prime. She is only fifteen. Oh, oh. Give her some time, she's not yet in her prime. She just reached half a century. Thank you! Eh eh. Sing oh, oh. Oh, oh.
Fifty years now, man we riding on this little bus number H473. H473. Eh, and somewhere somehow, we keep moving on this little bus number H473. Eh, H473. Eh, since '74 he started journey. With a young driver called Eric Carey. Under pressure, he changed some gears. Man, the road was bumpy those early years. Now as we look in the review mirror, we look in the review mirror. We see upheaval, we see sky red. So many passengers end up dead. Review mirror. We look in the review mirror. So much wanna me and sweeter. Some drivers what a them. Then a young driver named Kid Mitchell to cover the bus for a long spell. He made sure that it was nice and clean. But never bothered about the engine. As the parts corrode, foreigners came on board. Sent a chief we guy in the name of CBI. Even though man me flow, man me poor, we can pour whatever more, destitute and run a rebel. Now as we look round the corner, round the corner, round the corner, man we have to make sure this time that nobody is left behind. As we look round the corner, round the corner, round the corner, as we celebrating 50, let's eliminate poverty. On H473, we riding, let we ride.
On H473.
We riding side by side.
H473.
We riding, we riding on.
H473.
From Sir Eric Carey, Mount a Deacon.
On H473.
We riding, we riding free.
On H473.
We riding until 50, on H473.
We dance for all of we days, yes. Who not smile at the party? I tell you it's shouting, let them know where. Put your hands up, who's the baddest passer? Tell them what they know, curse the life there. If you love your country, I've been hunting we in life. When it comes to fighting, we don't play. We not live in this place till we saw him. The mountain of police can't move. Look, I saw we not hype it up. Whenever my team link up, as we bring the vibes, the life, the everything. Tell them, say Jack and Bad, we told you we. If you love the whole Caribbean, well, who not smile at the party? I tell you it's shouting, let them know where. We represent, who's the baddest passer? Tell them curse the life there, eh.
I've been holding we in life. When it comes to fighting, we don't play. We not live in this place till we save. The mountain. Guess what? Ah! We turn this life stuff. Ay, ay, ay! Party like a holiday. If you know you love this spice country, the whole Caricom community, who doesn't mind a bit party? I tell you it's. Shout it like that nowhere. We represent. Who's the body's pastor? Tell no curse the life there. Sing it! I've been holding we in life. When it comes to fighting, we don't. We not live in this place till we save. I love you guys. It was a pleasure to be here.
The energy of the Grenadian people is infectious, isn't it? And for those of you who won't join us for Carnival, we just wanted to give you a taste. At this time, I'd like to invite Secretary General of Caricom, Your Excellency Dr. Carla Barnett, to make opening remarks.
Your Excellency Dame Cecile La Grenade, Governor General of Grenada, Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada and Chairman of the Conference. Okay. Your Excellency Dr. Mohammed Erfan Ali, President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, outgoing Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. Your Excellencies, Heads of State and Government, Ministers, Heads of Delegation, Heads of International and Religious... Heads of International and Regional Institutions, Members of the Diplomatic Corps, Distinguished Delegates, Citizens of the Caribbean Community, Representatives of the Media, Ladies and Gentlemen. I extend a very warm welcome to this rescheduled forty-seventh regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. In a demonstration of remarkable resilience and courage, we are being ably and graciously hosted by the government and people of Grenada, who for the past four weeks have been fully occupied with the extensive assessment, recovery, rebuilding necessitated by the devastation caused by Hurricane Beril on Monday, July one. On behalf of the community, we offer condolences to all Grenadians who lost family members and possessions. We also extend our sympathies to the wider Caricom family in Barbados, Jamaica and St. Vincent and the Grenadines, who are also heavily impacted by the hurricane. The community stands with you as efforts continue to return to normal life. Prime Minister Mitchell, I voice our deep appreciation for the warm hospitality with which we have been received and for the exceptional arrangements in place for our engagements over the next two days. Grenada is of historic importance to Caricom. It is here, in the spice aisle, that the Grenans Declaration and Work Program for the Advancement of the Integration Movement was signed in nineteen eighty-nine. That occasion stamped our commitment to work expeditiously together to deepen the integration process and strengthen the Caribbean community. Thirty-five years later, our movement is still vibrant and influential, a testament to the strength of the resolve that was shown at Grenans and before that at Chaguaramas. It is therefore with great pleasure that I welcome the Prime Minister Mitchell to the chairmanship of the conference. Since he joined the conference in June twenty twenty-two as Grenada's newly elected leader, he has shown his deep commitment to the integration process and his attention to science and technology, including information and communications technology, for which he has lead responsibility in the quasi-cabinet of Caricom Heads of Government. Chair, we are assured that on your astute guidance, this forty-seventh regular meeting and for the next six months, the business of the community will be ably directed. I also extend congratulations to you and all Grenadians as you mark your golden Jubilee of Independence and even as our celebrations of Caricom's fiftieth anniversary end, we acknowledge our member states, namely Antigone, Barbuda, Belize, Dominica, Grenada, St. Lucia, Montserrat, St. Kitzan Nevis and St. Vincent and the Grenadines, who mark fifty years of Caricom membership this year. Since we met last face-to-face in Guyana in February twenty twenty-four, the community has been guided with decisiveness, determination and energy by our outgoing Chair, His Excellency Dr. Mohammed Erfan Ali, President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana. There have been notable achievements under his chairmanship, including increased engagement with Africa and the Middle East, advances on initiatives to increase the region's food and nutrition security and arrangements to widen the membership of Caricom. Importantly, there have been landmark advancements in managing the multifaceted crisis in our sister member state Haiti. A governance structure comprising a transitional presidential council is represented to here today. Welcome very much the President of the Transitional Presidential Council, has been established and through which a new cabinet has been appointed. We must note the critical role played by Caricom Heads of Government and the eminent persons group in bringing Haiti to the point of a transitional government represented at this meeting by Senator Edgar LeBlanc Fields, Head of the Transitional Presidential Council. The coming months are crucial to Haiti's future stability and Caricom remains ready to continue its support as needed. I also acknowledge our distinguished special guests at this forty-second, forty-seventh regular meeting, the Right Honourable Patricia Scotland Casey, daughter of Dominica and Antigone soil and a staunch advocate of the value of collective action to deepen integration and advance development. Regrettably, she is unable to join us physically for this rescheduled meeting, but we look forward to her virtual participation. Two Caricom stalwarts will be recognized with the region's highest honor, the Order of the Caribbean Community in this evening's opening ceremony. West Indian cricket extraordinary, Sir Clive Lloyd of Guyana. And the former Caricom Secretary General, Mr. Roderick Rainford of Jamaica, will join the pantheon of awardees recognized for their phenomenal contributions and legacy to regional integration and identity. I congratulate them both and express our appreciation for exemplifying the best of our region. Ladies and gentlemen, our integration movement has entered into the second half of its journey to a century. As we celebrated our fiftieth anniversary during last year, we took stock of our achievements and evaluated our faithfulness to the ideals of our integration movement. Even as we acknowledge that there is still much more work to be done, there's no denying that there are many noteworthy successes. Caricom has led or supported critical hemispheric and global issues that have influenced the thinking of some of the major countries of the world. Our relentless voice regarding the crisis in Haiti, our call for activation of the Loss and Damage Fund for our vulnerable small island and lowline coastal developing states, recognition by all the independent member states of the region to the State of Palestine, advocacy for the two-state solution to resolve the longstanding conflict in Israel and our call for the end to the ongoing war in Gaza. In all of these issues, we have signaled our perspicacity, courage and unity to the global community. Our growing impact and stature has led to an increasing number of expressions of interest from countries in the hemisphere to participate more fully in Caricom. In nineteen seventy-three, four founding member states signed the original Treaty of Chaguaramas. Today, we comprise a vibrant membership of fifteen member states and five associate members, with Curacao set to be formally installed as our sixth associate member today. I warmly welcome His Excellency. I warmly welcome His Excellency Guillaume Marpissas, Prime Minister of Curacao and his delegation and look forward to Curacao's active engagement as the newest member of the Caricom family. Excellencies, delegates and guests, I have a steadfast belief in the potential of Caricom to be a force for good for every Caribbean man, woman and child. Our dynamic interplay in economic coordination, functional cooperation, foreign policy coordination, security cooperation, tourism, education, agriculture and health is one of the hallmarks of our success, truly exemplifying the theme of this meeting, "One People, One Journey, One Future." However, while we share a common ancestry, history, heritage, our countries are known for their diversity. Blending these distinct and sometimes dissimilar characteristics is no easy feat. It is testament to our respect for each other and our vision and our love for the region and its people that our integration movement continues to deepen, thrive and make a difference. I note in particular the important role played by our regional institutions in solidifying our integration. This was especially evident most recently following Hurricane Beril, where the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency provided critical support for our assessment and relief efforts. We have taken notable steps towards realizing some of the main tenets of the Grenans Declaration signed on this soil in July nineteen ninety-eight. The free movement of nationals in the community, the provision of a reliable and cost-effective regional transportation system, establishment of the Caricom Single Market and Economy, economic and political cooperation and common market instruments. As our countries reinforce resilience and growth, it is critical that this forty-seventh regular meeting advances these and other discussions and decisions intrinsic to the objectives of Caricom integration. The staff of the Secretariat remain committed to giving our usual support to member states and their programs. We have been intentionally engaging the private sector, civil society, indigenous peoples, women and especially young people, who are the future of our region. Intergenerational views benefit the community with fresh, innovative perspectives and we will continue to leverage these together. As one people, we journey into our collective future. My hope is that as we rise from this forty-seventh meeting, more aware, more confident of our strength and more focused on the tangible outputs, food, health, shelter, education, social interaction and social justice, that will ensure the development and prosperity of our Caribbean community and its people. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Dr. Carla Barnett. Dr. Carla Barnett is the eighth Secretary General of Caricom. Ladies and gentlemen, I would now like to acknowledge the presence, the arrival of Honorable Philip J. Pear, Prime Minister of St. Lucia. Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I would now like to invite His Excellency, Dr. Mohammed Erfan Ali, President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and outgoing Chairman of the Caribbean Community.
Thank you very much. From the very onset, allow me, first of all, indulge you in a brief moment of reflection. As we, people of faith, ask for the strength of those families who have lost loved ones in Beril and for the communities that are healing and devastated and the leaders of those countries who has the responsibility of rebuilding with limited resources, that they too be given the strength of leadership during these difficult times. I ask you to reflect in prayers. I thank you. My dear friends, we can look at life from many dimensions. Professor Thomas always asks a question when he address regional institutions and regional gathering like these. Is the glass half-full or half-empty? It's an important question that we must address. I have deliberately allowed myself to follow the inspiration from my dear friend, Prime Minister Ralph Gonzalez. And his inspirations are normally very long. So if I am very long this evening, it is only because of his inspiration. But allow me from the onset to thank the Secretary General, the Bureau and the staff of the Secretariat for their enormous support and hard work during my tenure as Chairman. But I wish not to reflect on my tenure as Chairman because the governance mechanism of Caricom speak to a Bureau. And I wish therefore to position my remarks within the context of that Bureau. But I wish to remind us all that today we are meeting at a time when the world face many challenges and crises, none of which originate from this region. The climate crisis did not originate from this region. The energy crisis The energy crisis did not originate from this region. The inequality crisis did not originate from this region. The crisis of indignity did not originate from this region. But this region faced and continue to face these challenges that we must confront. Sometimes, we do not celebrate who we are, and we do not get the glamorous headlines across the world for the contributions we are making as a region and the difference we are making as a region. And we do not seek after those glamorous headlines. But I think if we do not correct the narrative that is sometimes used to define us and the narrative that is used to set us in a certain frame, we will be doing a continuous injustice to those before us, those who are with us, and those who will come in the future. And I wish to highlight some of these issues and position CARICOM and for the people of this region to be the judge. As to the question that is consistently asked about the relevance of CARICOM, the importance of CARICOM, these questions can be easily put to rest, and I want to do so tonight with some examples. Today, all of us in this room, we face rising prices. And all of us, in a reflect action, point all our fingers to the governments. But what about the system that is failing us globally? What about the fact that in the last... I'm not ever going to go back to COVID because we spent two years redirecting resources for education, for infrastructure, for agriculture, for security to fight COVID, to give our people an opportunity to live? We did this with resources from our budgets. We did this with very little international help. We did this with some strong friendship that those before us would have created for us that we must go back to. But we succeeded. How many headlines would speak to that crisis and how the leadership of the region navigated that crisis? As I speak to you today, in the last six months alone, we are importing inflation at a record level. The cost of shipping, the cost of shipping increasing by more than a thousand percent, eight hundred percent. We did not cause that. We did not create the conflict around the world that is driving up the cost of shipping. But we are facing those challenges with increased costs of shipping. The increased cost of energy. The countries that must now direct budgetary resources that should have gone to healthcare but now to rebuild after Beryl. Where is the voices of the private sector and all those who profess immense love for the region in helping the leadership of the region to call upon the international community to support the redevelopment and to support the rebuilding of the economies that suffered even from this latest hurricane? Very few voices. But all fingers are pointed to the leadership and the governments. Without an acknowledgement of the challenges, we as leaders are not shying away from the challenges. Prime Minister Rowley convened a regional conference on security, acknowledging that we have a problem, but went beyond that, allowing the region to understand the source of the problem and the importance of addressing the source of the problem, and then developing a holistic approach in dealing with the revelation of the problem. But that aspect of the discourse becomes absent. Important aspect of the discourse, but it becomes absent. You know, what we fought for as a people and as a region is sometimes forgotten. First, peace. We then had to fight for an identity. After we fought for dignity and identity, we then had to fight to ensure we had our own values and values were not imposed upon us so that we can have our own value system. And now, as we fought these battles, we have to now fight to ensure we build systems that work for us and not systems that are imposed upon us. We have to build systems that work for our region. And this require the private sector, it requires government, it requires the academic community. We have to come together and build systems that work for us. We have to trust in ourselves. We have to have faith in each other, and we have to have hope about the future. Is the glass half-full or half-empty? Sir Clive Lloyd, an example that we can all take a page from. Leading not a cricket team, West Indies Cricket Team was not only fighting to win cricket matches, they were fighting for an identity, they were fighting for a culture, they were fighting for freedom, they were fighting for people, they were fighting against oppression. And we led that fight. West Indies Cricket led that fight. This region led that fight. Make no mistake about it. On the issue of democracy, and I'm only going to go in the last three or four years because we forget these things. It's very easy to lump the entire system into a basket and then set the basket in a river. But on the issue of democracy, as Chair of CARICOM, I sat with colleagues, SG and her team, for hours upon hours, days upon days. We went to Jamaica. Jamaica convened a special meeting, invited all stakeholders. Well, let's be backstab. In Guyana, we held a special breakfast with all international stakeholders in the region. Then we went to Jamaica. Jamaica, Belize, then invested money. Jamaica invested in training security personnel. And then we spent, we left our normal duties and sometimes spent six, seven hours in the night. What did we spend that time on? The people we love, the people of Haiti, to ensure that Haiti was returned along a path of democracy. And many media outlets in the region and extra regionally call us all type of names, tell us we are in all different pockets and we are sellout. Today, we, and I want to thank former Prime Minister Henry because he was the part of the process of resigning himself in government. And today, we have a presidential council, a prime minister, and we remain strongly committed to the task of ensuring Haiti return to full normalcy, democracy, and governance. Make no mistake, this was no easy task. This was not accidental. This was hard work, sustained work and commitment from this region. And we don't want to be applauded. We don't want to secure the headlines for this. But I want to put on the record today that the leadership of this region must be applauded, and I want Haiti to know. I want the people of Haiti to know. Never, ever, never, ever reduce the role CARICOM played in this situation. Never be let to believe that we were in any pockets. The only pocket we were in was the pocket of the people for the love of the people, the freedom of the people, and the return of normalcy in Haiti. I want to thank Jamaica, Belize, St. Kitts, Barbados, St. Vincent, Trinidad and Tobago, Grenada. I want to thank every single head, every single member of the CARICOM family that allowed us to achieve this significant moment in regional life. I say to the leadership of Haiti and the people of Haiti, we remain strongly committed to you, to our love for you and our love for the people of Haiti. On that note, I want to recognize the eminent persons group who worked relentlessly and to say to the leadership of Haiti openly, we have said it in meetings, we are prepared to support Haiti with this group continuing its work alongside you, in support of you. Not to lead, in support of you. The eminent persons group remain a mechanism to help and support you on this journey to democracy and good governance. In my own country, also, in 2020, we were faced with tremendous threat to our democracy. CARICOM again turned up. CARICOM again, again, many leaders were called all kinds of things in parliament, in the news, and from all stakeholders. But they quietly stuck to their commitment for this region and for Guyana, and again, I thank them. Our security threat. It was easy for a big news agency to highlight the threat to our national security in Guyana. Prime Minister Ralph Gonzalez, again. Go to many of the headlines and see how this was characterized too. Convene a meeting among regional heads, brought together all sides, and we avoided disaster for this region. This is the region I'm talking about. Speaking about disaster and climate justice and climate change, there is no stronger voice on climate change than the voices of the leaders of this region, led by Prime Minister Mutley, enormous work on reforming the financial system. And not only for this region, for every single country, every SIT's country, Prime Minister Mutley is championing every single day the reform of the financial system to bring climate justice not only to us but to all those who are suffering. We don't hear about this. This small region, no louder voice on climate than Prime Minister Mutley. This region, no other best practice on forestry, leading the charge on forestry, leading the charge on biodiversity, ensuring that we maintain our forest lowest deforestation rate in the world. No other country, and we, a country that forms part of the CARICOM region, is providing this leadership. Do we hear about it? Do we celebrate it? Do we do case studies on this in the classes in universities? Or do we continuously look at the glass half-empty? Sports, we just concluded a T20 World Cup. To host this, the governments invested millions of dollars to ensure that our people can have the best sporting event here too. No issues, flawless from our responsibility. I can't say from the ICC responsibility, I can speak from our responsibility. Not a single headline recognizing the investments. Trinidad and Tobago, everybody can complain about the state of cricket. But the leaders were bold enough to call a conference specifically designed on cricket. Where are the headlines? Where are the headlines? Financial instruments. The partnership SG spoke of expanding our reach with AfriXimbank, with Africa, trying to build financial instruments, bringing in new investments. Where are the headlines on this? It's as if these things never occurred. It's as if these things never occurred. AfriXimbank now having a permanent place in the region with a headquarters in Barbados. Or do we find them insignificant to recognize them? Or it does not fit the construct of the narrative to believe that these regions can be part of the solution, Prime Minister Rowley? The choice is ours. We can be silent or we can work together. We can define ourselves or continue to allow ourselves to be defined. Choice is just ours. As he spoke about CARICOM, expanded interests. Interest in expanding through associate membership and membership, and interest in being a part of us from new areas around the world. Persons' righting to be accredited, countries' righting to be accredited. We must be doing something right. There must be some recognition of CARICOM and what we can offer. Energy security. I saw Prime Minister Rowley, you signed a new energy pact. I also saw Chevron getting to 2050. It's a reality. Look at all the headlines in the region. Two situations occurring at the same time. Examine the headlines. Do we trust ourselves? Do we trust ourselves to ensure that we can provide a justice? Do we trust ourselves to ensure that we can provide a justice among ourselves? The CCJ, outstanding judgments from the CCJ. Tremendous work in improving the delivery of justice from the CCJ. It is time we boldly embrace our own ability to provide justice for ourselves and the people of this region. Transportation. Poor initiatives. Year after year, we are asking the private sector to come forth. Guyana, Barbados, Trinidad and Tobago, and others decided that we can't wait anymore, we'll advance the cause. What happened? From the time we advanced the cause, you hear some members in the private sector say, this is our responsibility. We are grateful to our responsibility, but be bold, innovative, take the risk and invest in it so that we can end this problem in our region. Everything comes back to the government. You know, I will be bold enough to say we can continue buying and selling and distributing, or we can start building our productive capacity and capability in the region. But to do so, we have to start supporting what we use in the region. How are we going to do it? We can't do it by talking. We have to do it by ensuring every stakeholder is on board. The distributors must not only see profit in bringing stuff and selling, they must see the opportunity in innovation and product development to meet the needs of the region. And we believe in private sector growth. We believe in supporting the private sector. That is why we want the private sector to do it. We will create the enabling environment, the conducive environment. But that environment has to be utilized if we are to bring the benefit to our people. So my friends, in every category, sports, Jamaica is going to make us proud as well as Trinidad and Tobago and many of the countries here at Olympics. But you know what? We will celebrate as a region, all our athletes, put your hands together for athletes. And our athletes will rightfully secure the headlines across every newspaper, but not one line would recognize the investment that was made by governments to enable the performance of our athletes. Whether it's the high-performance center in Jamaica, whether it's the stadium that we're investing in, Comrade Ralph, that is just a reality. That is just a reality. We have reduced, according to the CARICOM World Food Program Livelihood Survey, we have reduced our food insecurity by 17%. By 17% since we started in 2020, that's before Beryl. By 17%. Did we get the headline? Beryl came, the damage to the agricultural sector alone is more than $100 million US dollars. And I'm not counting opportunity costs because government now must reprioritize where they will spend the money. So guess what? Agriculture will have to take a cut. These are the realities. And as we confront these realities, we must all remember there are more challenges ahead. And as I welcome my brother, Prime Minister Michel, the challenges of AI, digitization, and robotics already confronting us, and our leaders are already thinking about it. Because that will continue to widen the inequality gap between our competitors and our trading partners and us. But we have to confront these challenges. We have to find investment. Whilst we are doing this, our human assets that we are training are moving. Look at the condition of our nurses now. We invested in training our nurses. A lot of investment too. Where are our nurses going? Yes, we acknowledge that people must go for whatever opportunities you are taking might be better or is better from a profit and loss perspective. But what about compensating us for the training that we provide to fill the gaps that exist in other countries? These are real questions. These are questions that we must examine. We share an important geographic space. And in sharing this geographic space, our commitment to the rule of law, to democracy, to freedom must be unshakable, unshakable. Our commitment to these three things must be unshakable. But our commitment to ensuring that the societies we built have safeguard that would disallow the type of weapons that are getting into our borders. Just as we have to build our borders and we're investing our borders, investing in our security system to ensure our borders reduce the negative impact on other borders. Whether it's the movement of drugs, we have to ensure we build stronger system so that our borders are not used as tools to affect other borders and other countries. We have to fight the drug trade, fight transnational crime. And to do that, we have to invest in security. We have to invest in border protection. We have to invest in force security. We have to meet all international standards, and we are committed to doing so. But we must also ask for some more to be done on ensuring the guns that are coming into our system are not coming into our system. That requires investment and require special assistance, special assistance as we deal with crime and criminality in our society. These are the questions that we will confront as we gather. These are the questions that we will seek solutions for. But we will do so with a commitment to the world that this region will always support peace, will always support justice, will always support freedom, and will always support the equitable development of all of humanity. I thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, Your Excellency Dr. Mohammed Urfan Ali, for your compelling remarks and leadership of the Caribbean community. We know that you will continue fighting for our region. Thank you once again. And now, ladies and gentlemen, our independent schools choir will perform two Grenadian songs.
In the blue Caribbean sea, lies a gem for all to see. In the warm and sunny sky, it's Grenada.
It's Grenada.
My home and the love forsaken for any other nation under the sun. It's Grenada.
It's Grenada.
My home I'll always remember. The nutmeg spices and the natural brandy. There is a lovely little island in the west with sunshine, good foods, and all the rest. Population is small, but visitors can recall. Smiling faces to welcome all and all. We will answer to our island's calls. We're proud to be born in this land. To thee we pledge our loyalty, our hearts, our eyes, our destiny.
From the drugs and the crimes and the problems all around, we will make it safe for the ones to come.
Grenada, you are so beautiful and your people are so cool. With fresh spices and friendliness, you can always be the best. So let's take this moment and make the whole world smile. What we have is more than one, each other and forever. Let's hold on to the music. Let's hold on to the melody. Let's hold on to the rhythm that beats, that beats for you and me. Let's hold on to the music. Let's hold on to the melody. Let's hold on to the rhythm that beats, that beats for you and me. I love you. We will grow stronger, we will stay together. No matter what kind of weather, we will march together for our country, Grenada. Onward and upward forever. We will grow stronger, we will stay together. No matter what kind of weather, we will march together for our countries together. Onward and upward forever. I love my country, I can feel it in my bones. It calls to me wherever I go. That's why I know wherever I go, Grenada will always be my home.
I love my country, I can see it in my dreams. From coast to coast, the rivers to streams, the mountain tops to tropical ranges, the smiling faces and holy praises.
We will grow stronger, we will stay together. No matter what kind of weather, we will march together for our countries, Grenada. Onward and upward forever. We will grow stronger, we will stay together. No matter what kind of weather, we will march together for our countries together. Onward and upward forever. Onward and upward forever. Onward and upward forever.
Thank you, CARICOM, for your generosity to Grenada, CARICOM, and PT Magni.
Onward and upward together. We now move to the accession of Curacao into the Caribbean community. For this, I'd like to invite Dr. Carla Barnett, Secretary General of CARICOM, General Counsel Miss Lisa Sherman, and Prime Minister of Curacao and Prime Minister and Chairman of CARICOM, the Honorable Deacon Michel. the Honorable Deacon Mitchell. His Excellency, we want to invite His Excellency to say a few words. I've prepared your device to make your remarks.
Honorable Chairman of Caricom, Prime Minister of Grenada, the Deacon Mitchell, honorable ex of government of Caricom, distinguished ambassadors, representatives and guests. Ladies and gentlemen, now is good evening. On July 2nd last, we celebrated the 73rd year since Parliament of the Island of Curacao confirmed for the first time in 1951. With the constitutional changes in 1954, Curacao became part of the Netherlands Antilles, which was dismantled in 2010. And the new constitutional country of Curacao was born as a result thereof only 14 years ago. These were significant constitutional moments in our long history within the Kingdom of the Netherlands. Today marks another historic event for Curacao as we formally join the Caribbean community as its sixth associate member, thereby honoring the commitment of our country to our shared responsibility for the sustainable development and overall progress and well-being of all nations within the Caribbean community. Just as it is the case with the other associate members in their relationship with the United Kingdom, our membership of and commitments within the family of the Kingdom of the Netherlands will not compromise our commitments towards further regional integration and its objectives. As this commitment comes from the fact that we are an integral part of the Caribbean family, our cultural identity is linked to the rich historical heritage of the Caribbean region. We intend to demonstrate a firm commitment towards Caricom and the common aspirations of its members. In this context, our shared heritage has forged a spirit of unity among us in many areas of our historical development, which commit us to its preservation and as far as possible its enhancement for the generations to come. By joining Caricom, we affirm our commitment to work together in the interest of the collective values and aspirations that bind all of us as small island development states in the Caribbean region. In addition, Caricom's mission to promote economic integration and ensure sustainable developments for all its members align perfectly with our nation's objectives. As we embark on this new chapter, we are committed to contributing to and benefiting from the synergies that Caricom memberships offer. Regional integration and cooperation are therefore not only beneficial, but also essential for our future development in the Caribbean region. Furthermore, becoming an associate member of Caricom will strengthen the already close bonds we have with the members and associate members of the Caribbean community and it will enable us to contribute more effectively to the collective Caribbean cause. In this regard, we bring to Caricom a unique blend of cultural traditions, economic strengths and social perspectives that hopefully will enrich the community as a whole. In terms of functional cooperation, as we become more familiar with the dialogue structures and institutions within Caricom, we look forward to participating in Caricom's robust network of support across the region and work together with other members on important issues affecting our mutual progress, resilience and sustainability. For instance, economic integration is at the heart of Caricom's mission. Our strategic location, natural ports and well-developed physical and professional service infrastructure can serve as a hub for regional trade. By investing in connectivity and logistics, we can help streamline the movement of goods and services across the Caribbean, boosting economic activity among our nation and creating jobs for all of us. By working together, we can create a more competitive and resilient regional economy. To demonstrate Curacao's firm commitment to regional trade, we have already started negotiations with the Dominican Republic and Trinidad and Tobago and are about to do so with Suriname. These negotiations will result in a mutually beneficial free agreements with these member states. When finalized, these trade agreements will come into effect after our membership of the World Trade Organization is effective. Apart from economic integration, Curacao is particularly committed to support initiatives within Caricom that provide the potential for collaboration in areas such as renewable energy, new forms of agriculture, digital technology and telecommunications, human capital development, climate resilience and sustainable development. These policies areas hold immense promise for our future development as small island development states and the collaboration between members of Caricom. We are convinced that we will all benefit if we pool our resources and expertise together to achieve results that will benefit all of us. Moreover, the strategic relationship of Curacao with key global players such as the European Union through its link to the Netherlands and its relationship with large South American countries, including Venezuela, Colombia and Suriname, as well our relationship with the United States positions us as a valuable partner within Caricom. These relationships have been cultivated over many years of political, diplomatic and economic engagement and they offer a wealth of opportunities for Caricom as we move forward together. Consequently, these strategic relationships, as well as the fact that we speak at least four languages, provide us with a strong foundation to act as an intermediary or liaison between Caricom interests and the interests of these global and regional actors. We are therefore perfectly poised to facilitate various kinds of political, economic, social and cultural exchange, dialogue, collaboration and mutually beneficial agreements that will benefit all Caricom member states and associate members. Honorable colleagues, heads of government of Caricom, I firmly believe that Caricom can effectively advocate the interest of its members as small island development states in global forums such as the United Nations, the World Trade Organization and other multilateral institutions such as OECD, IMF and World Bank. This is so because regional cooperation makes it possible to increase the political impact in different international policy areas that touch the interests of small island development states. As a member of the family of small island development states, Curacao stands ready to support these efforts in any way possible. In conclusion, our accession to Caricom is a testament to our shared vision of a united, prosperous and resilient Caribbean community. We are truly honored to join this esteemed organization and look forward to collaborate with all members and associate members to achieve our common goal. We also bring with us the experienced resources and the vast international network of the Kingdom of the Netherlands, which we can leverage in optimizing our collective strengths and economic connections and to navigate geopolitical complexities to the benefit of all Caricom member states and associate members. Finally, I wish to thank our family members in the Kingdom of the Netherlands, Aruba, Saint Martin and the Netherlands and my beloved people of Curacao for supporting us and all members of Caricom for the privilege to become a partner in this esteemed Caribbean community. Mister Chairman, on behalf of the people and government of Curacao, I hereby wish to extend our best wishes for the continued advancement and prosperity of Caricom and the well-being of its inhabitants. Master of Silver. I thank you.
Congratulations, Curacao, and welcome to the Caribbean community. Ladies and gentlemen, the moment we've all been waiting for. I now invite to the podium the new Caricom Chairman and Prime Minister of Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, to deliver his Caricom remarks.
Thank you very much. The laptop says I have the incorrect password. And so I may have to take inspiration from Ralph. But luckily on a second chance, I got the password. The Excellency Dame Cici Larenat, Governor General of Grenada, distinguished colleague, heads of government, heads of delegation, members of the diplomatic corps, members of the media, those viewing this evening's proceedings online throughout the region and beyond. Welcome to Grenada. Welcome to Caracu. Welcome to Piti Martnik. And I will claim Union, Myru and Canoan this evening. When I hear my voice, it tells me I have something. I'm not so sure if it's... Whenever Carnival is coming, you get some kind of flu. But since we had beryl, I seem to have developed some sort of allergies or something of the sort. So I'll take it it's the post-beryl allergies or flu. And it's not a joke because since beryl, when you wake in the morning, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of these small little flies all over. They blanket the floor, the window. In fact, when you walk on the floor and you look underneath your feet, there's the evidence of this. I assume Carfa or some other regional institution at some point, University of the Western, the UWE, will assist us in assessing, studying and telling us what it is and whether it's good or bad for us. So I want to start by, as our school students said to Caricom, "Thank you Caricom. Thank you Caricom for all that you have done for Grenada, Caracu and Piti Martnik." You know, when I journeyed to Suriname in 2022 for my first heads of conference meeting, I went back last night and looked at what I said. And you know what happens when you're young and you're fresh and you're no come? And I said then, "We should ensure Caricom is not an institution that talk and talk and talk so much." President Ali talked a lot this evening. President Ali talked a lot this evening. Now, you notice he didn't open his folder. He had a speech, he didn't read it. He got some inspiration from UE. I won't tell you which part of the speech inspired him, but I will call his delivery in defense of CARICOM. And there was no better closing play than the accession of KIOSO to this prestigious institution called the Caribbean Community. So I know that CARICOM doesn't just talk and talk and talks more. I know this because today, President Ali, his Foreign Minister, his Chief of Defence Staff, journeyed with me this morning, the CARICOM and PT Martnik, the Greek, the Guyanese Defence Force soldiers, who are right now repairing the police station in Hillsborough in CARICOM. Who are right now repairing the Hillsborough Secondary School in CARICOM. Who are right now repairing the post office, the district revenue office and the administrative building in Hillsborough in CARICOM. Prime Minister Rowley, within 24 hours of Hurricane Beryl, stopped the two Osprey boats that are owned by a PT Martnikian family that had moved to Trinidad for safekeeping to ride out the storm with goods and supplies to send to Grenada. The RSS contingent of soldiers from Antigua and Barbuda and Barbados, notwithstanding that Barbados itself was hit by Hurricane Beryl, when CARICOM and PT Martnik providing security support for policemen in CARICOM and PT Martnik. Dominica, which itself was decimated by Hurricane Maria not so long ago, sent Grenada a million EC dollars. The British Virgin Islands, 250,000 US dollars. The Cayman Islands, the premier and an entire delegation flew to Grenada in person to demonstrate their solidarity to Grenada and to St Vincent and the Grenadines. They delivered 250,000 US dollars each to us. So who is coming to save us? Who is coming to save us? So you see, I know that CARICOM doesn't just talk and talk and talks more. So I want to say, I will continue the in defense of CARICOM speech this evening. And Prime Minister Skerritt, who's an outgoing member of the Bureau, always says this. The only people who defend the Caribbean are the politicians. Where is our academia? Where is UE? Where is civic society? Where is the once mighty labour movement that shaped the politics and defined historic errors? Where is the modern day Uriah Buzz Butler? A Union man walking in the back. You should come forward, my friend, come forward. I say this because CARICOM doesn't belong to the heads of government. It's the Caribbean community, and we are not going to shape a vision for the next 50 years simply because the heads of government meet. The vision of the Caribbean community is a vision that has to be shaped by the people of the Caribbean. In reflecting on CARICOM's 51 years in existence, I read the speech of Errol Barrow when the Treaty of Sharjah was signed. And in that speech, he made reference to Sir Eric, and I'm calling him Sir Eric, Dr. Eric Williams, whom he said never really wanted to be a politician, who people had to beg. And his thank you is the thank you that the President of Guyana talked about relentless criticism, relentless naysayers, allegation of corruption, mismanagement, et cetera, et cetera. If that is the narrative that we choose to define CARICOM and ourselves, if that is how we view ourselves, always inadequate, always second best, then we are helping others to easily shape our narrative. But I know that it is CARICOM that prevented the region turning into a war zone like so many other regions currently are right now. I know that it is CARICOM that has responded the swiftest and in the most extensive manner to our plight here in Grenada, CARICOM and PT Martnik from the ravages of Hurricane Beryl. I know that it is CARICOM that is going to take the fight for reparatory justice throughout the length and breadth of the world. I know that it is CARICOM that fights for small island developing states, not just in this region, but small island developing states worldwide. I know it is CARICOM athletes that will shine in Paris. So why with these obvious examples? Why with our RSS? Why with our CCJ? Why with our Caribbean single market and economy? I'll talk a little bit there. I want us to appreciate something. CARICOM is the longest surviving, and survival is not an appropriate adjective, it is the longest striving integration movement in the developing world. We are talking South and Latin America, we are talking Africa, we are talking Asia. There is no other like CARICOM. And so when we talk about persons wanting to become associate members, we're not just talking about from within the region. There have been inquiries from countries far and wide as to whether there is the opportunity to have a relationship with CARICOM. And why is that? It is because the external world knows and recognizes the value of CARICOM. You can ask them in the UN, when the big boys and girls want your vote, they find a way to come and walk around the chair where Grenada, St Vincent, St Lucia, Guyana or Trinidad sits. So we must recognize our value. We must shape our narrative that says you, we have the same right as everyone else on this globe. And I want us to appreciate that we have been tested time and time again, and yet we rise. Comrade Gonzalez, in reflecting today, said under his stewardship, he's dealt with at least 10, at least 10 natural disasters, plus suffering. Two weeks before this hurricane hit Grenada, we were in a state of drought. We had water regulations in place that prevented you from washing your car, filling up a swimming pool, farmers couldn't get water. Two weeks later, as soon as the rains started to fall, you get hit with a category four hurricane. So I want us to appreciate that the resilience we have is not something that we should take for granted. It is something that you, we are in together. You know, I said this at the United Nations in 2022, and I just want to repeat part of it because it reinforces the UE. Mister President, I was then addressing the President of ONGA, and I said confronting the climate crisis will require a complete transformation of our mindsets and behaviors also, and importantly, the transformation of our energy sources, economic models and land stewardship. This is a unique opportunity to come together, welcome innovative ideas and tackle the problems we have struggled with for generations. I said the pleas not without urgency. I said as a leader of a small island developing state sits, I'm all too familiar with the devastating effects of climate change and the stark reality that we may not have a country to pass on for future generations. This is not a joke. This is not nice sounding words. When a mother meets you in CARICOM and asks why, why me? When everything that they've worked for is gone. The Guyanese Defence Force briefed the President, when you pass people, they are dazed one month later. They are still in shock. They are still traumatized. You think after you spent all your life working hard, doing all of the things you've been told to do, and in 45 minutes, right in front of your eyes, it's gone. And it's not just you, it's everyone else. But this isn't just CARICOM and PT Martnik. With each hurricane season that now brings the more powerful storms, I said that in 2022, well, beryl, anti-beryl break all records. All records. So we are not imagining or exaggerating or engaging in hyperbole if ever we understating the urgent reality of what we are facing. I said in 2004, it was Grenada's turn with Hurricane Ivan. In a matter of a mere eight hours, we lost 34 souls and the category three storm destroyed over 80% of our housing stock and decimated our economic and fiscal bases with damages surpassing 200% of our gross domestic product. 10 months later, we got hit with another storm, Hurricane Emily. I said we watched in horror as our brothers and sisters across the Caribbean experienced their turn. Hurricane Irma in 2017 left the island of Barbuda nearly uninhabitable. So when I say we may not have an island or a country to pass on, it's not coming from bombs that we are dropping on another island. It's coming from the climate bombs that others have caused to be dropped on us. Then it was the British Virgin Islands. It lost approximately 85% of its housing stock. Two weeks later, Hurricane Maria destroyed Dominica. It left 31 people dead, 37 missing, 930 million in damages. Did anyone come to Dominica's rescue? It has become one of the most heavily indebted islands, countries in the world because in order to rebuild, it has had to borrow and borrow from the very people whose actions have led to the ferocity, the increased strength and the alarming increase in frequency in these hurricanes. And there are people that will always want to fact check us, so let's fact check. I think my mother was born in 1955, that's the year of Hurricane Janet. We did not experience any major hurricane thereafter until 2004. But then in 2005, we got hit. And we in 2024, and we get hit again. So if you do the math, you went from one in every 50 years, odds we could live with, survive with, to two every 20 years. So every 10 years, we expect to be hit by category three, four, five, and it may go off the scale, six, seven, eight hurricane. So that is what existential means. It's a big word that everybody uses now. If someone chooses to drop bombs and shell your country, it's existential, but it's easy to stop. The human beings just need to stop. You just have to decide we will end the war, we will sit, we will negotiate, we will call a truce. Explain to the citizens of CARICOM and PT Martnik how we are going to stop these category four and five hurricanes from hitting them. That is why it is existential. That is why CARICOM must, shall and will continue to advocate for climate justice. So my colleague, member of the Bureau, President Ali, talked about some of the technical work that we will engage in over the next two days. I want to reemphasize again that a lot of this work is not of our own doing. The guns pose a clear and present public health danger and not manufactured in the Caribbean. So yes, national security, crime and criminality, the gun violence is something that we must and will treat with because it poses a clear and present danger to public health and public welfare in the region. I need not speak about Haiti because President Ali has clearly outlined the countless hours and the resources CARICOM has put in supporting our brothers and sisters and the people of Haiti. And I welcome the presence of the President of the Transitional National Council with us today. The Caribbean single market and economy and the movement of people remains a priority and Prime Minister. And Prime Minister Motley, who leads this issue, will be with us tomorrow morning. And we intend and expect to make progress on this issue. And I know some of us in the region may be a little cynical on this issue. But as I called out, the labor and the business and the civic society, you too can play a part in helping us to find the solutions that leads to more rapid advancement on those issues. Because oftentimes, the timidity may come from the fear of political reactions from the citizens at home. So we have to educate our population and unshackle them from the idea that the free movement of our citizens within Caricom will do anything other than enhance the growth, the strength, and the solidarity within the Caribbean community. And I said this, when we have disasters, there are no borders. I don't recall any extensive paperwork for the Guyana's defense force to be in Caracu and Pitti Martini. I don't require, I don't recall any extensive paperwork for SEDEMA to be in Grenada, to be working, to be providing support to our National Disaster Management Agency. Ms. Riley, thank you. In fact, I don't recall any major extensive paperwork for all of the international donor agencies which are in Grenada, Caracu, and Pitti Martini doing work right now. So why are we clinging on to fears? We all know each other. We all know the chicken curry or the curry chicken. So we will continue to advance work on this issue. As chairman, I will champion an ambitious digital transformation agenda as Caricom's leader on ICT. We have an opportunity in the Caribbean to ensure that for once, we do not get left behind in this technological revolution. And so I will outline tomorrow a proposed strategy for addressing a number of issues across the digital transformation landscape, ranging from cybersecurity to digital health to a digital skills fund, amongst others. We owe it to the next generation of Caribbean citizens to give them the tools and the education to make sure that they can stay in the Caribbean and ply their skills anywhere in the world. Because there is no better place to live than the Caribbean. So I want to conclude by thanking the two members of the bureau that I worked with prior to my becoming the chairman. The Honorable Roosevelt Skirt, Prime Minister of Dominica. His Excellency, President Ali, President of the Corporate Republic of Guyana. Their guidance, their stewardship, their steadfast defense of Caricom. And more importantly, the significant achievements accomplished under their respective tenure leaves me in good stead to continue with the work that they have started. I look forward to welcoming Prime Minister Mia Motley, who will take up the chair after I conclude my stint and who therefore becomes a member of the bureau, to continue to work closely with her and President Ali as we continue to champion all of the issues that he has highlighted, the issues that I have raised. And I want to assure the citizens of the Caribbean community that the glasses are full and it is our responsibility to get it to three quarters full so that the next generation of Caribbean citizens could take it to eighty percent and eighty-five percent. We, we know it will never be full. So welcome to Grenada. Thank you for coming. We took the decision to host this meeting notwithstanding the impacts of Hurricane Beryl because it is important to send the message to the world that Jamaica is open for business. Jamaica is open for business. Barbados is open for business. St. Vincent and the Grenadines are open for business. Grenada is open for business. And as we've said, we shall rise. Thank you very much.
Indeed, you did rise. A good opportunity to stretch. The Caribbean community looks forward to your leadership, Honorable Prime Minister, your passion, your hard work for the next six months, steering the ship of the Caribbean community. Thank you for your very emotional and inspirational remarks. We would now like to distribute two awards. The Order of the Caribbean Community Awards. And to deliver the citations, I would like to invite Ella John, an inspiring lawyer currently obtaining an associate degree in social sciences at the T M Marshall Community College. She is a student council president, peer counselor, uh, who is making a significant contribution to her community. She will do the citation for Mr. Roderick Rainford and Mr. Aravinda Bishop, a young cricketer attending the Presentation Brothers College, the first ambidextrous youth cricketer who bats and bowls with both hands. He's not going to play cricket this evening, but he will read the citation for Sir Clive Lloyd. Let's welcome them.
Citation for Roderick George Rainford. Roderick George Rainford was born on April seventh, nineteen forty, in Kingston, Jamaica. After completing his secondary education, he received a Bachelor of Science degree in economics from the University of the West Indies. Later, as a Rhodes Scholar, he proceeded to Oxford University, where he read for his Bachelor of Jurisprudence degree and a diploma in economic development. After brief stints as a tutor at the University of Zambia and the University of, of the West Indies, Roderick Rainford proceeded to the University of Toronto, where he received his Master of Arts degree in international relations. He returned home to Jamaica, where he again served at the University of the West Indies and subsequently, the Ministry of Industry and Commerce. This was followed by appointments as Deputy Secretary General of Caricom from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-three and as Secretary General from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-two. His appointments with Caricom came during a period when the region, as a group of low and middle income, small island, and low-lying coastal states, faced myriad challenges and was redefining itself and its role in a rapidly changing world. Indeed, Roderick Rainford's tenure was noteworthy for the number and intensity of challenges to the regional integration process and the initiatives taken to safeguard, strengthen, and advance the community. For example, when the Morris Bishop government of Grenada was overthrown in nineteen eighty-three and the country was invaded by a group led by the United States, newly appointed Secretary General Rainford helped to manage and defuse a diplomatically explosive situation. He was also involved in the adoption of the Grand Ancestral Declaration in nineteen eighty-nine that chartered the course toward expansion of the Treaty of Chagaramas and establishment of the Caricom Single Market and Economy, CSME. With the region under intense international pressure to abandon its common external tariff, CET, a major instrument in any single market, the Secretariat undertook a comprehensive study of the CET in consultation with member states, which the conference adopted in October nineteen ninety-two after exhaustive review. It remains the principal reference material informing ongoing study and the development of the CET. He also spearheaded a major review of the existing regional programs and organizations of the Caribbean community in which some essential elements for the deepening of Caricom were identified. This period also saw the establishment of the Independent West Indian Commission, WIC, of which Mr. Rainford was himself a member. In recognition of the region's vulnerability to natural and other hazards because of climate change and climate variability, Roderick Rainford oversaw interalia, the development of the Caricom Uniform Building Code, CUBIC, which was a regional code for constructing safe, sturdy buildings in an earthquake and hurricane-prone region. Additionally, after Hurricane Gilbert devastated Jamaica in nineteen eighty-eight and Hurricane Hugo flattened Antigua and Barbuda in nineteen eighty-nine, under Roderick's leadership, the Secretariat mobilized and led regional technical response teams to assist with assessment and emergency actions. This led to the establishment of the Pan-Caribbean Disaster Preparedness and Prevention Project, which evolved into the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Response Agency, SEDERA, and later, the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency, SEDEMA, now recognized as a global best practice. Roderick Rainford has served the Caribbean community at the highest level. Indeed, many sectors and several regional and international bodies have benefited from his vast knowledge, experience, and wisdom. He was a member of the Board of Directors of the Caribbean Development Bank, CDB, advisor to the International Monetary Fund, IMF, director for Canada, Ireland, and the English-speaking Caribbean, and alternate director for the Bahamas, Barbados, Guyana, and Jamaica at the Inter-American Development Bank, IADB. He has also written extensively on issues pertaining to the region's social and economic development, providing a legacy for future generations. Roderick Rainford's years of service to our Caribbean community have been result-oriented, marked by calm, humility, quiet grace, and diplomacy. Those who served with him at the Caricom Secretariat fondly remember him as a people's person, a good and decent man, whose door was always open to them. His service has been recognized through the awards of the Cassique Crong of Honor, CCH, by Guyana in nineteen eighty-nine, and the Order of Distinction, OD, by Jamaica in nineteen ninety-two. Significantly, Roderick Rainford played an integral role in the development and submission of the proposal to establish the Order of the Caribbean Community, OCC, for approval by the Conference of Caricom Heads of Government. Mr. Roderick George Rainford, for your outstanding and enduring contribution to this region and its people, the Caribbean community is pleased to confer on you its highest honor, the Order of the Caribbean Community, OCC. Thank you.
We would like to invite Mrs. Rainford to collect the award and Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell will present the award to her.
Chairman of Caricom, the Honorable Prime Minister of Deacon Mitchell, the Exim Secretary General, Dr. Carla Barnett, the honorable heads of government, distinguished leaders and members of the diplomatic corps, friends and guests to the people of Grenada. Congratulations on your fifty years of independence. And Dr. Prime Minister Deacon, I have to say that I'm very upset that I don't have a pin that says fifty years. Also, I have to say that I enjoy being among a young prime minister who is very, very charming. And also, I love your shoes. I, 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 the half of what I wanted to say has already been, been said about Roderick. So I will just, I will just read about two pages of his, the people he wants to thank. But I do have to say that he was very committed to, to disaster preparedness. It's something that he worked very, very hard at. And also, I think when he was a child, I think Hurricane Charlie devastated St. Andrew. And, and at that time, it was, it was very difficult. And one of the things that I found very interesting, because he started teaching us this last year. And, and I wanted to repeat that little rhyme, that little ditty that he's been teaching us. And it goes like this. June, too soon. July, stand by. August, remember you must. August, remember you must. And I don't, don't say, uh, August, you must. August, remember you must. September, remember. October, all over. And I just thought, I thought that was, and I wanted to know where he got it from. I have no idea where, where it came from. But I think it did have an impact on him because he became a pioneer of, of disaster preparedness in the Caribbean. So you should continue to teach kids little ditties like that. Who knows what would happen? There are a lot of accomplishments which you've, you've heard of today, but I was going to tell a story about Roderick's time in Zambia. But I decided not to do it because then it would make it too long. And I know Prime Minister Deacon doesn't like long speeches, so. And I do want to please him. So but it, it was a story about how he, how he pioneered University of Zambia in the northern provinces of Zambia and how nobody knows about it because it was a Jamaican and a Caribbean person who did this. And it is untold and unknown story. So I hope one day that, that we get to hear that. Just let me say this part. Roderick Rainford was born in Kingston, but raised in the hills of St. Andrew, the Blue Mountains. Uh, his parents, I want to talk a little bit about his parents. Um, Justina and Glenovan Rainford were small cultivators and his father was also a baker. He lived in Enfield and, and in, and Irish Town and attended Gardentown All Age School, now the Louise Bennett All Age School. He was a loved child and, and the last of seven children. Uh, three girls and four boys. He remembers his days at the school with fond memories. Aunt Gwen, who when he took his bowl to get his cornmeal porridge, she gave him a little extra. So thanks Aunt Gwen. And then there was Mr. Living- E então, havia o Sr. Livingston, o professor da escola, que tomou um gosto de Roger, porque ele leu todos os livros na biblioteca da escola. Claro que a escola só tinha como cinco livros, mas ele leu todos eles, ele leu todos os livros, e então o Sr. Livingston o amou e ensinou-lhe, deu-lhe outros livros a ler e assim por diante. Então, quando o teste chegou, eu vou te contar essa pequena história, mas eu não deveria, eu não deveria, acelere. Quando o teste chegou, eles tinham um teste para a escola secundária, e então todas as pessoas em, 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 em cima das montanhas, e na área de Gardentown, chegaram ao centro, e todos comentavam como essas crianças vão tomar o teste, e o que vai acontecer. E então ele me conta essa história, e ele disse: "Todos disseram, bem, quem vai passar esse teste? Quem vai passar esse teste?" E todos disseram que essa garota, ela tinha pele brancinha, e ela vai passar o teste porque ela tinha boas cabelos, mas ele passou o teste. Ele não tinha boas cabelos. Então, uh, então eu quero voltar aos seus pais. Então, de qualquer forma, o Sr. Livingston, o Sr. Livingston, ele não conseguiu, ele passou o teste, ele não podia ir à escola secundária, então o Sr. Livingston conversou com uma família de Gardentown, que o deu uma licença, e ele foi para a Escola Tecnológica Kingston. E, uh, ele, ele, uh, ele fez, ele fez muito bem na escola, e então o Sr. Livingston passou o batom para os professores da Escola Tecnológica Kingston, e eles ran a corrida e eles ganharam, porque ele posteriormente se tornou Secretário Geral, governador do Banco de Jamaica, e todos os outros acolhos que você já ouviu falar. Então, eu só quero dizer que os professores fazem uma diferença. E claro, você sabe, eu sou um professor, então. Eu vou dizer essa coisa final aqui, há algumas coisas que eu quero dizer. Mas o prêmio não teria sido possível sem a influência e apoio de muitos, o ex-Prime Minister de Jamaica, ele trabalhou com ele de forma próxima no Ministério do Indústrio, e seus antigos amigos, Irene e Leo Cousins, Anthony Hill, seu melhor amigo, o late Justice Henderson Downer, e o trabalho áspero de funcionários e funcionários do Caricom, como Byron Blake, Sheila Chan, Valerie Odle, o late Angela Cropper, Glenda Itiaba, Sandra Granger, Sr. Kenneth Hall, Dr. Eddie Green, Carol Collins e Rudy Collins, e Branford Isaacs, e tantos outros. Ele é o trabalho áspero de seus pais. Ele ainda, depois de todos os anos de viagem, vive nas montanhas pelas, e se remenessa sobre seus pais todos os dias. Ele ajudaria seu pai na cultivação, e seu pai o mostraria às bananas que ele vendia. E ele pegaria seu filho e apontaria as bananas. Ele dizia: "Esta mão é para seus sapatos, e esta mão de banana é para seu短袖". E ele, e ele apontava outras mãos de bananas como isso. E ele, e sua mãe, se você deu a Roger uma placa de arroz e peixe agora, ele diria: "Isso não é como minha mãe's arroz e peixe, ok?" Então, todos temos que ceder a isso. Mas os valores, os valores, uh, eles passaram para ele foram humildade, disciplina, trabalho áspero e respeito auto, amor da terra e amor da Jamaica. Ele, sua boa sorte vem de suas mãos, e ele é eternamente grato. Seus irmãos e irmãs eram importantes para ele, especialmente sua irmã Cissy. Quando ele recebeu a licença de rua, eles pagaram sua educação, mas eles não pagaram para sua passagem. Então, sua irmã Cissy descobriu uma maneira de lhe dar o dinheiro, e ele ficou em um barco, naquele momento ele ficou em um barco, e ele foi para Londres. Eu quero, eu quero meio que dizer que sua irmã Cissy, que sempre seguiu ele até que ela morreu, descobriu a maneira, e ele embarcou no barco para Londres. Se o seu nome não está aqui, não é intencional. Ele esqueceu muitos nomes, mas você deve saber que ele inclui todos você e envia flores de gratidão. Gratidão é a memória do coração. É uma citação de Jean Baptiste Monsieur. Eu encerro com uma citação de uma carta que ele escreveu ao Secretário Geral Barnett, quando ele recebeu o prêmio. E diz: "Dei, Dr. Barnett, obrigada por sua carta me avisando do confirmatório em mim do honor do Caricom, do Orde da comunidade caribeira, OCC. Estou feliz de ser incluído entre os dignos caribeiros patriotas que já receberam este distinção, e eu prometo continuar conduzindo minha vida de uma maneira digna deste privilégio." E eu tinha escrito uma carta, mas ele rejeitou. E ele chegou com isso mesmo, e então eu escrevi de maneira dutos. Mas eu estava muito movedor por sua humildade intuitiva e sua constante self-effacemente, que ele nunca se colocou acima de nada. E infelizmente, ele disse, não, felizmente, eu estou dizendo infelizmente, minha esposa vai vir e fazer isso. Por favor, aceite meus melhores desejos para o continente de crescimento e desenvolvimento da comunidade caribeira. Tua, de verdade, Roger Rainford. Ele estava muito orgulhoso da Crã de honra cassique, que foi dada a ele por Desmond Hoyt, e ele também foi feito o Orde de Jamaica, então ele realmente deve ser chamado de Honorable Roger Rainford, mas de alguma forma ninguém faz isso. E agora ele está no Orde da comunidade caribeira. Então, eu só queria dizer que Roger Rainford quer dizer a todos vocês que o conhecem, que ele envia a vocês seus melhores desejos. Ele não está bem, mas ele está mantendo seu espírito e sua humildade, e seu amor da caribeira, e um patriota da caribeira.
Nós temos, nós temos uma pin para você. O Prime Minister vai pegar ela.
Eu disse que eu desejo que eu fosse um aluno.
Ela disse que eu seria um estudante excelente.
Em Guiana, anteriormente este ano, o Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt disse algo a esse efeito, certo? Está vindo para o passado, provavelmente. Aravinda Bishop, jovem estudante de cricket, ele agora lê a citação para Sr. Clive Lloyd.
Boa noite a todos. Citação para Sr. Clive Hubert Lloyd, CBE, AOBM, por ser awardado o Orde da comunidade caribeira, OCC. Sr. Clive Hubert Lloyd nasceu no 31 de agosto de 1944, em Georgetown, British Guiana, a seu pai autor, que era um chefe e uma mãe que ele adorava. Sua mãe, que era de Blackrock, Barbados, ensinou seu filho valiosos e leis de vida duras: as virtudes de paciência, honestidade, independência, e a importância de respeitar os outros. O jovem Lloyd tinha uma formatura típica guineense. Ele sabia e entendia a cultura de seu país, especialmente seus aspectos multiraciais e multicultural. Isso o permitiu ficar confortável mais tarde na sua vida pessoal, e como capitão de West Indies, com pessoas de rias diferentes e background. Ao 14 anos, Lloyd se tornou capitão do time na escola de Chatham, em Georgetown. Ele mostrou sinais de talento excepcional. Um pouco mais tarde, seu pai morreu, e ele não tinha opção além de sair da escola e buscar emprego na Georgetown Hospital. No entanto, Clive Lloyd permaneceu interessado em coisas intelectuais. Ele lê amplamente e se familiarizou com ideias importantes no cricket e outros assuntos. Seu valor como um pensador no campo do cricket, e em outras áreas, foi reconhecido com o prêmio de vários doutores honorários, incluídos da Universidade de Guiana. Lloyd se juntou ao Cricket Club de Demarra, onde ele mostrou uma aptidão excepcional para o jogo. Ele foi selecionado para jogar para a British Guiana em 1964. Não foi o início mais auspicioso de sua carreira. Sr. Lloyd falhou em jogar em suas primeiras rodadas, e muitos pensaram que isso era o fim de sua carreira. No entanto, ele mostrou grande resiliência nas rodadas segundas, jogando um senteiro, e chamou a atenção de críticos de cricket por sua brilhante habilidade no ponto de vista. A seleção de Lloyd para a West Indies Tour de India em 1966 não foi surpresa após sua performance na competição de Shell Shield. Foi um debut impressionante. Ele jogou muito em ambas as primeiras rodadas e rodadas segundas. Após a ida indiana, Sr. Lloyd se juntou à Liga Lancashire, onde ele estudou condições na Inglaterra, e tentou perfeitar a técnica do seu jogo. Infelizmente, em uma corrida mundial em Austrália em 1971, Sr. Lloyd caiu quando ele tentava pegar um paseio e cortar seu coté. Ele foi imobilizado por muito tempo e não podia andar. Um homem menor teria dito adeus ao jogo, mas isso não era do caráter de Lloyd, ou seu livro de vida. A resiliência que ele mostrou quando seu pai morreu, e quando seu metal foi testado nas primeiras rodadas contra o Barbados em 1966, estava em desplasmo, enquanto ele passava por fisioterapia agonizante para recuperar seus movimentos motor. Finalmente, através da disciplina e determinação, Sr. Lloyd superou esta perigo mais desafiante para sua saúde. Em 1972, ele foi capaz de retornar ao cricket, e jogou para a West Indies contra a Austrália na série de 1973. Muitos na caribeira não perceberam que quando Lloyd assumiu a capa de uma equipe de cricket de West Indies, ele havia estado静地preparando-se para esta responsabilidade. Ele estudou o temperamento e a atitude de grandes jogadores de West Indies. Embora tudo, ele estudou a importância e valor da cricket de West Indies para toda a região. Para ele, a equipe de cricket de West Indies era uma extensão do processo de integração regional. Ele achava que um capitão de cricket de West Indies é também como um Prime Minister da região, que deve liderar por exemplo, e unir e inspirar aqueles a quem ele é responsável. Então, Lloyd pegou uma nova equipe de cricket de West Indies, e a tornou uma força importante no cricket mundial. Ele entalhou a equipe com uma ética de disciplina e um sentido de propósito. Como resultado, ele foi responsável pelo desenvolvimento e sucesso de críticos crescentes, como Sr. Vivian Richards, Gordon Greenwich, Michael Holding, e Lawrence Rowe, a name de alguns. A equipe de Lloyd continuou a ganhar 27 partidas. Ele também ganhou duas Copa Mundiais. Durante o mundo, a equipe de cricket de West Indies tinha se tornado uma palavra para sucesso, e Sr. Clive Lloyd foi diretamente responsável por este desenvolvimento, dando ênfase na psicologia e desenvolvimento individual de seus jogadores. Após sua retirada do cricket, Clive Lloyd se envolveu na administração e desenvolvimento. Ele treinou na África do Sul e outras nações de cricket. Ele foi cheirador para o Conselho de Cricket de West Indies, e um referee de match para o Conselho Crítico Internacional, ICC. Mas seu interesse no jogo não acabou aí. Ele tem sido ativamente envolvido em discussões sobre a melhora do jogo na caribeira, e tem feito numerosas propostas a este endo. Agora, como no começo, o cricket é sua vida. Em 2022, Sr. Lloyd foi anunciado por seus serviços ao cricket. Não há dúvida que ele deu ao mundo do cricket um paradigma para criar, gerenciar e liderar uma equipe de cricket sucedente. Sr. Clive Lloyd, é com imenso prazer que a comunidade caribeira confie em você o maior prêmio, por sua invaluable contribuição à comunidade, como crítico e líder. Você inspirou orgulho, excelência e dignidade no povo caribeiro. Seu legado forgedo no hem da equipe de cricket de West Indies, triunfante contra todos nós e a oposição, será um sítio abidinho de inspiração para gerações a seguir. Sr. Clive Lloyd, meu nome é Aravinda Bishop. Eu sou um jovem crítico em Grenada e jogando para as Islas Winwood. Eu assisto todos os vídeos. Eu assisto todos os vídeos para aprender cricket de críticos como você. Sr., eu amo seu estilo de batida, jogada de estrope, paciência e temperamento. Eu sou um basman de levação igual a você, e meu sonho é jogar cricket para as West Indies como você fez.
Prime Minister, Honorable Deacon Mitchell, e Cheirada, nós convidamos você agora a apresentar o prêmio da comunidade caribeira ao Sr. Clive Lloyd.
Depois de Rainford, mas isso é trabalho áspero. Cheirada, o Honorable Dr. Arif Ali, Madame Secretária Geral, Honorable Carla Barnett, Honorable Prime Minister da grande nação Grenada, Your Excellency Deacon Mitchell, líder estimado desta organização icônica, Caricom, presidente e membros do Cricket West Indies, membros da Corpo Diplomático, mídia, mulheres e senhores. Não preciso dizer, estou humilde de estar em seu meio, e de ter sido considerado digno deste louco honor, e de fato grato pela recepção. Eu soube que Jeff Boycott estava suposto estar aqui para apresentar o prêmio, mas ele, ele vai para a casada de seus melhores amigos. E enquanto os pares estavam a partir, e o sacerdote disse: "Que Deus vá com você", então Jeff foi com eles. And I, as... As I was working with the West Indies Cricket Team, it's quite new, you know, you're getting to know certain things and so on. So we went to function. And the guy said, one part of the room said, "Ping." Somebody said, "Ping." Somebody else said, "Ping." And I'm saying, "What the hell is this ping?" So I'm wondering now, because you know, I've now joined the team as manager. So I called Ambrose, Courtney Ambrose. I said, "What is this ping thing?" He said, "Skip, do you have a microwave?" I said, "Yes." He said, "When it's ping, it's finished." So they are saying, "Oh..." You know, so afterwards, I kept saying, "Ping, ping." So we've all gone now and this, this thing. But it was quite interesting. Again, you have to know the little lingo of these guys. But I would like to commend you, ladies and gentlemen, for your imaginative leadership as you tirelessly pursue economic integration and sustainable development, ultimately to improve the quality of life for everyone, not only in this region, but to extend our positive influence beyond our sun-drenched shores. At this juncture, I'm compelled to recognize your astuteness. Thank you. I'm compelled to recognize your astuteness in identifying our beloved sport of cricket as a viable vehicle and conduit for social, economic development and regional integration. Indeed, my predecessors, in receipt of this prestigious honor, Order of the Caribbean Community, OCC, Sir Garfield Sobers, Sir Vivian Richards, and Brian Lara, is testament to your incisive recognition. The court, a late lamented leader of Caricom and an OCC recipient, Jamaican Prime Minister Michael Manley, from his book, "A History of West Indies Cricket", published nineteen eighty-eight, quote, "Cricket is the most completely regional activity undertaken by the people of the member states of the Caribbean community," Caricom said Manley. "It is also the most successful cooperative endeavor and as such is a constant reminder to a people of otherwise wayward insularity of the value of collaboration," unquote. Ladies and gentlemen, it is this notion that in retrospect inspired my ambition, as did the legacy of dearly departed Sir Frank Worrell, when I had the distinct honor to serve as captain of the West Indies Team. Sir Frank's grace, his dignity, and astuteness in leadership, as well as his relentless pursuit of quality and fair play, provided a blueprint for my stewardship. My goals were mainly to rekindle team spirit, dispel our endemic cavalier image, and establish a winning attitude. On that journey, I was blessed with quintessential team players that routinely turned pressure into adrenaline and flaunted their mental toughness with almost an arrogant flair. And so our team's success was more than just a matter of luck. And if it were indeed luck, it would have been an acrimony from correct under, under correct knowledge, labor under correct knowledge. But most importantly, ladies and gentlemen, our team simply reflected the ebullience of men playing a child's game with skilled abandon that transcended its boundaries to unify and elevate the Caribbean community as any cultural entity. I'm indeed grateful for your validation and urge your continued support of the development of West Indies cricket, spawned by initiative of the fertile minds of the permanent Caribbean Caricom Subcommittee. Ladies and gentlemen, you must know that amongst knighthoods, honorary doctorates, and national honors with which I have been blessed, this award, which emanates from an aggregation that essentially fueled my professional career, holds pride of place. As I proudly accept this iconic award, my wish is that my parents, Sylvia Thelma Lloyd, Arthur Christopher Lloyd, were present to see me receive it. More particularly, my mother, who would have perhaps finally appreciated the benefit of my foregoing lunch while chasing a cricket ball day in, day out, in the searing heat at my Field of Dreams, the Demerara Cricket Club, a stone's throw from my house in Queenstown, a modest suburb of Georgetown. It is there my parents instilled in me the qualities of discipline, decorum, and dedication that have served me well, not only in my career, but in life. I also wish, ladies and gentlemen, that this moment could be embalmed for austerity to the young aspiring cricketers, even those yet unborn. From the majestic Blue Mountains of Jamaica to Mount Diabote in Dominica, to the searing Pakemraiamum peaks of Guyana, and all across the shimmering Caribbean archipelago in between could aspire and experience the reality of taking the Caribbean community back to the Senate. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, there is a matter which I would like to raise with you today. It is of great concern to myself and a number of important officials that I've had the opportunity to engage with on this matter. I hope you do not think that I am operating outside of the ambit of this occasion. But I know that the Caribbean community have been concerned with the status of health of the region. Indeed, one important regional official is on record as saying that we are not among the healthiest people in the global community. He was referring to such diseases as high blood pressure and diabetes. I cannot recall if reference was made to prostate cancer. Can I therefore make a plea to the community and relevant officials that this matter become the focus of urgent attention and action? I therefore hope that the Conference of Ministers Responsible to Health will give this matter priority attention. I cannot speak with any kind of expertise on this matter, but I cannot recall that much has been said about it in the region. If I'm correct, that what I say today be a call to action. Because I must, I don't know if you know, every one in four people do contract this illness. And a lot of our people are dying and dying needlessly because they're not attending clinics and so on. And I'm involved with a company called SOS, which is part of Exxon. And we were trying to get this illness looked at seriously. Because we need men to go and get tested. It is important. And I think we should speak to all our kids, make them our friends. Let them go and get tested. It's important. You do not, you do not need to die. There are things now that can, they can help you. There's a situation now in, I think a scientist has just said that you can, your test, your saliva will give you a better reading than your blood test. So there are things that we have. We don't, we don't have to die. We want to live, and I want to see people getting tested because the thing that we have, the slogan is "The Catch." That means that we want to catch it early. So it is something that is going to be interesting and something that we, we need to get working and working soon. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I'm aware that Caribbean states that sought in recent times to build an element of resilience into their economic planning to protect their economies from the ravages of hurricanes. This involves, I understand, encouraging the development of sectors like the renewable energy, agriculture, and technology to reduce the reliance on tourism and the hardening of the nation's infrastructure. However, I'd like to make this humble suggestion. The Caribbean region can organize a major cricket event. And the best players from all over the world should be able to take part in a game per year. I want it to be called the Caricom Day of Cricket, where we can generate quite a lot of funds. So that even if we don't have a hurricane or two for the year, the money that we have there can accrue some interest, and we can help not only when there, when there are problems around the Caribbean. We would have money in the kitty to help out in that respect. So this is just my, my way of thinking. I hope that we, we can get this going, get it off the ground, because it will be a very important day because the money that we can accrue would be very, very important for the rest of the Caribbean. Last but not least, I must thank my cousin, Lansford Richard Gibbs, who inspired me as a teenager when he soared to greatness as he played for the West Indies. Ladies and gentlemen, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you. But another thing that I, I think there's something that I need. I hope we have some board members here. Over the years, in our ascendancy, we did not ask for any extra money. But now, I'm told when they have distribution of funds, the ICC, England receives a hundred and eighty million, Australia received a hundred and eighty million, India, a hundred and eighty million, and we're eighty million. I want to know where we're to get this disparity from. I can't understand. Because when we were lead, everybody wanted to play. We were playing two tours of winter. We were the cash cow for these guys. But now that we might be a little down in the dumps, nobody now is saying, "Well, you know, West Indies do need some help." And I think that it's about time that our boardmen make a special call to the ICC. Send ten or twelve people who we know have the pull and that extra that is needed to tell them that we need some special dispensation. Over the years, we gave them money. Nineteen seventy-three, when we were there, we got to England and we asked for more money. The guy said, "Can't give you any money. You haven't won test match for twenty-one test matches." And I was a senior, I was sort of senior at that time. And I said, "So winning is important." So what happened? They didn't give us any money. But VAT came in, so we had to pay VAT on the little bit of money that they had given us. So we won the series. They made all the money. We went to India, playing five test series, and the guy said, "Listen now, your guarantee is being paid off before the rest day in the fourth test match." I said, "Oh, there again, we're being messed around." We asked for more money. The guy said, "You're going to Pakistan? If they give you some money, we'll give you some." When we got to Pakistan, "Oh, we won again. For the first time, we beaten Pakistan, in Pakistan." The guy said, "Did India give you any money?" Said, "No." He said, "Well, then we can't give you any money. You just left me." So we were, that's how people are treating and will treat you if you're second class. But the point is, when we rose to the top, we demanded, because you're coming as a champion, a world champion. We were world champion for youngsters. At one stage, if you were seventeen, you were seventeen years old, you would not have seen the West Indies lose. We won eleven test matches successfully. We played twenty-nine test matches without losing. We won three World Cups. We now have won six World Cups, and we're only five million people. We don't have that amount of people. So I'm saying, and I'm making a plea here to to Mr Rowley. I know you have a chance to make sure that our cricket is up, get up this ladder. We cannot just be teaching guys and then all of a sudden they've gone elsewhere. So if we train thirty people and fifteen leave, we've got to train another fifteen. So it's like digging a hole to fill a hole. And we have a small set of people, country people playing sport. There are the walks of life that they have. So we have to protect what we have. And we've got to say to these young men, "We don't mind you going to earn money, but when we have our cricket here, we would like you to play here." Because if I'm going to invest money in our cricket, I want the best to play. When I was young, I played against Wes Hall, Charlie Griffith, you know, Sir Garfield Sobers. And you played against the best. You will only know how good you are if you play the best. And the point is, we have youngsters now who are struggling because our domestic cricket is weak. If our inter-island cricket is strong, our test matches will be strong. And that is what we have to get over to these young men. India, they don't play anywhere else other than India. Their players are getting the type of learning that we, we got earlier in our career because you're playing with great players. India have got now X, a lot of X players in the IPL, so they're getting some, some experience that they wouldn't, wouldn't have acquired, you know, if they didn't have that. Sri Lanka, they're one country. You know, we have fourteen different islands. It takes us a lot of money to hold a tournament because we have to fly everywhere. So we need to get some money from that ICC because that special dispenation is needed. Somebody in this room or some people in this room will have to put their hands up and say, "Listen, we are going to get some money from the ICC. Else we're going to be down at the bottom all the time." We are asking some young men in England to do things. They're not, they're, we were lucky. We played against the best when we're playing at home. We played county cricket. They're not playing county cricket. So they don't get any experience as quickly as we did. So we have to strengthen our cricket at home. And that means all our top players staying at home and playing against one another. Anyhow, I'm sorry it's taken long enough. Thank you very much, and thank you. Where's my young friend? Is he there? Is he there? I want to hear you now getting some runs, right? I don't want you to make as many as Mr. Ali. Good, good luck, huh? Cheers. Thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Lloyd, and congratulations. We will close at this time with a dance performance entitled "The Melting Pot", a dance featuring poetry by Camille John, conceptualized by the Conception Dance Theatre. Enjoy.
Rhythms pulsing through veins are not created, they are born. Intrinsic beats that reflect reality, thumps that showcase pain and strength, like the ancestors plucked from their home, like low-hanging fruit, looted and spirited away to be subjugated to the whims and wishes of the others who stole them from the land of their mother. Rhythms pulsing through.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Conception Dance Theatre. Performance entitled "The Melting Pot". We want to say thank you very much, everyone, for joining us for this opening ceremony. And before you leave, we'd like to ask the heads of government to leave the hall first. And we want to say thanks one more time to the Conception Dance Theatre. And we'll allow the heads of government to dance off in drums. Ladies and gentlemen, our Governor General James C. La Grenade will make her exit first. Following her will be the heads of government.
In the sun, turn the world we have been there.
We're higher, fifty and replaced with frozen fire.
Oh, you man! We going up, going up, going up, going up, going up, going up.
Island in the sun, look at how we've grown, how far we've run. Fifty years we strong and more to come, more to come, more to come.
Going higher, fifty years we blessed with forged in fire, still reaching for more.
Going up, going up, going up, going up, going up.